Now bring this meeting to order. At what time? Seven oh one. All the role, please.
Carrie.
Present.
April.
Present.
Flintoff, present. Grant.
Here.
Monk.
Here.
Noah.
Here.
Riser.
Present.
All here. Also present, office coordinator, Kristi Akin, county attorney, Mariah Fink.
Moving on to adoption of the agenda. Are there any suggested changes?
I have three. We'll see if they why. I would like to move possible L one, two, and three off to consent. The committee to interview the construction manager and architect, the natural areas technician, job description, and the the COLA effective four one twenty five. So I would propose to move L one, L two, and L three to consent.
I would support.
The only procedure issue I find with that is we do need somebody's name inserted in L one.
L one requires deliberation.
Yeah. Because there's a blank. It says.
Appoint the committee.
It says motion by blank, said by blank, authors fire team out of state from O H M and blank to interview.
All right.
So the other two were.
Okay.
So amend your emotion, your your motion.
Sure, yes.
Just to.
Three, L two and three.
L two and three. And move, I'm sorry, say that again, to consent.
Yes, ma'am.
I would support moving L two to consent, but I want to keep L three off consent.
Well, then it's like it's only L two.
Yeah. Yeah. I also have a late.
No, yeah.
Yeah. A late arriving item. I just got yesterday from the county. I have handed it out here. I would suggest adding it to new business. It is very brief. Had I gotten it last week, I think it would have been appropriate for consent. But it is something that requires action tonight.
What do you suggest?
New business.
Assistance?
Yeah.
L eight, nine.
Anticipated will be very, very brief. The required amendment of countywide early voting agreement to accept the Mesa special elections.
Or we'll put that at the end of L nine. We're going to call it that.
Okay.
County early voting. Any other suggested changes? That was a motion. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda or amended?
I would move it as amended.
Support. Amendment motion by Riser, support by Noel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
None. While she passes.
Okay, communications to board trustees. Clark Flintoff, you had uploaded some. Are there any questions?
There, there's about five, five items we have here and a variety of topics. I.
There's more there than what? How many altogether?
We have from Laura Reicher correspondence about the DDA appointments. I think there's three of those. Electrification of the township, notice of master planning in Norfield Township. Another note from Carrie Papastian. And then the three memos I just included here for reference related to the input on the cost allocation plan from Daryl.
Okay. That's not what.
That's what I show.
I can't show all these.
Yeah. Yeah. I I updated it as I noted on Sunday, I think Sunday or Monday.
Okay, there's ten here, but okay.
I did have a couple of comments about correspondence. I could have for three minutes from the board.
Sure.
I did, I did want to say when I was preparing the correspondence packet, there is one, one piece of correspondence that I received that I did not include in this packet, but I want to speak to it publicly. I received it last week. I'm not even sure that it's properly considered correspondence. It was on a piece of paper. It was an anonymous and threatening note that I received, delivered by someone's hand in my private office space at Township Hall. It was delivered after hours in the evening or at night. I want to be clear that I'm your township clerk. I received a threatening and bizarre anonymous note. Somebody created it. Somebody snuck through Township Hall after hours at night and put it under my office door. They didn't send it through the mail. They didn't drop it off at the front desk. They didn't attach their name. It was cowardly and it's an act of somebody who has lost their way. The person who spent it, who created it, they spent a lot of time. As a little mixed media, some tape, newspaper, you know, some screenshots, really kind of creepy arts and crafts. Spent a lot of time rambling, weirdly long consideration of font style. Like truly, the note was like something out of the beginning of a B rated eighties horror movie. You know, the very beginning where the women are still alive. So it weirds me out. It really weirds me out. How much time this person has spent thinking about me? It's creepy and I'm telling you to stop. Whoever you are, stop. If there's a group of you snickering about it, stop. If you're involved in creating this note, delivering this note, please get some help. Some mental health support. Talk to family or friends, a mentor, anybody in your life who generally gives you good counsel. Get some perspective on what you've done. You have fallen out of touch with what is socially acceptable, normal, or lawful. Do you want to advocate? Come to public comment. Say it to my face. That's part of my job as a public official. Write a letter with your name attached to it. Figure out a way to communicate effectively while respecting everybody's right to be safe. What is not part of my job is being harassed or threatened in my workplace. Never in my nearly six years of working here at South Township Hall has this ever happened. Ever anything like this. It can't happen. No staff who work here at Township Hall should be subject to this kind of threatening, creepy, and antisocial behavior. I'm reporting this publicly to the board, to the public, because I need your help finding out who did it. I'm an openly gay elected official. I'm an elections administrator. I'm at high risk for threats, harassment, and abuse. And there is no place for this kind of behavior at Scioto Township Hall. Not for me or not for any of our staff who work so hard day in and day out. So I want to personally thank everybody who's assisted thus far in the investigation. It is underway. If anyone in the community has any information about this disgusting incident, reach out to me, Kristi, Aurora, Ryan, or Mariah. Let us know what you know. Thank you on my behalf and on behalf of the staff who work here at Township Hall day to day. We all deserve to be safe at work.
When did this happen?
Jessica, Jessica, I'm sorry that happened to you.
Thank you. Last week.
Was it reported to the police?
I would, I would just also say, and I was the one that ultimately picked it up off the ground. Jessica was walking in from parking lot over her door for her. I just thought it was, it's a male or other correspondence. When I saw it, I just really was concerned, you know? Obviously, we're going to have our differences as a community, as a board, as the world, but it was very creepy and concerning.
Where did you find this?
It was delivered to my office, under my door. My office. My office.
No, was it after hours or during?
After hours.
After hours.
Under key swipes?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Did you look at the file logs?
So, yeah, the, and I don't want to speak openly about the investigation. I will say we've been moving at a very quick clip and have reported it to authorities. But at this point, I'm asking for the public's help. So thank you.
Anything else about correspondence? Next is introductions and recognitions. We don't have introductions today, but we do have a recognition for Sarah McCleary. Yeah, she's, she's our, one of our assessors. She's our newest and she came to us with a level two and she has completed her level three. And it took, I think there's eight levels or eight, I don't know, modules within that, that next level, and she has accomplished that. So congratulations to Sarah. Good job, Sarah. Yeah. Okay. Next, public comments. Open to anyone present that would. This is the time for the members of the public to speak up to five minutes on any matter under the purview of the Board of Trustees.
Hello, I'm Kathy Jiskovich. I'm SIO resident and member of the SIO's Sustainability Task Force. And you have in your pack tonight a letter from the task force asking that you make certain that electric vehicles are considered for both of the pickup truck purchases listed in the 2026 thirty one C I P. We also ask that you consider adopting a policy prioritizing E Vs whenever light duty fleet vehicles are purchased. As described in the letter, SIO Township set a goal of zero greenhouse gas emissions due to townhouse township operations no later than 2030. We've made some encouraging progress toward that goal with the solar array on our fire station and recent improvements to our Township Hall. But our fleet remains entirely powered by internal combustion engines. I heard costs brought up as a reason to choose the less expensive traditional gasoline powered pickup. So I looked up a comparison between the Ford F one fifty and F one fifty Lightning, the electric version. The study was undertaken by Karen Driver and compared the cost to own the vehicles for three years. Figures were up to date as of a little over two years ago. Included in the calculations were purchase price, maintenance costs based on average miles driven, energy usage, gasoline costs versus charging costs, and depreciation. While the purchase price of the F one fifty Lightning was almost fourteen thousand dollars higher than the traditional F one fifty, if you look at the entire cost of ownership for three years, the F one fifty will actually cost nearly three thousand dollars more. And if you carry the cost out to five years, the E V saves you even more. In addition to this, the difference between the upfront price, the two vehicles is less now than it was two years ago. Once again, we'd be happy to put you in touch with other local municipalities that have purchased similar E Vs for their fleets. We'd also be glad to help develop a fleet purchase policy to help with decision making. Thanks for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Boyd, a SIO resident. I had the pleasure of chairing the 2025 SIO Compensation Commission. We had a good team, members with backgrounds in small business, office management, medical services, some with hiring and firing experience. We had differences of opinion, but no hostility. Attorney Fink was also present during the deliberations. We produced a set of recommendations for the Board of Trustees. I want to review our tasks for the Board of Trustees quickly so everyone understands what we did and why. Our task was to determine the appropriate compensation for the clerk, supervisor, treasurer, and trustee positions for South Township over the next two years. Please remember that it's not an evaluation of the people in these roles right now. This is based on the role itself, and as such, it needs to be aligned with the skill, experience, and responsibility we want to see in these roles to represent this township properly in the future. Also, we are not tasked with determining if the supervisor position would be labeled part time or full time. Township office staff gathered the information we requested on compensation provided by other similar municipalities in Michigan. We also reviewed printed information collected by some commission members as well as the Board of Trustee members. I believe those documents were all published with the agenda packets with the exception of the six documents we received from supervisor Carrie, and I believe those are attached to your agenda packet tonight. We also considered the interest level and number of candidates competing for these positions since they're all chosen by elections. We discussed the statutory duties, the education requirements, the responsibilities, and the relative experience needed in each of these roles. We brought in our current treasurer, clerk, and supervisor to describe their current activities and the activities of the deputy clerk and deputy treasurer as assigned by the clerk and treasurer. We discussed how these activities and responsibilities have changed in the last few years and will continue to change as our township grows. I understand that some Board of Trustee members and members of the public were unhappy with some of the data we considered. One of these discrepancies was resolved before the committee even discussed it. And in other case, one of the data points provided to us by staff was incorrect and still reportedly incorrect on the South Township website. That figure was not significant in any of our decisions. Bottom line is that we are confident that our evaluations included enough data points that there aren't, that they aren't impacted by revisions to some of the provided data. We also understand that some Board of Trustee members and members of the public feel that they would come to different conclusions. That was understood when we all individually agreed to be on the Compensation Commission. And it is not unexpected that there are differences of opinion. So we discussed and understood the many variations in compensation, including variations in population, municipality, taxable values, inflation, and the marketplace for these skills. There is no exact formula. That's why we have a commission and you have our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you for your work, John.
Hello, I'm Jonathan Greenberg, also member of the Compensation Committee. I was here today to be available to answer any questions. I had not planned on speaking. Upon learning of this communication that was sent to Clerk Flintoff, I feel compelled to say that not only is that not acceptable behavior in Township Hall, it is not acceptable behavior in our community. It really, really bothers me to hear that somebody would do something like that in our community. It's very disappointing and I'm sorry it happened to you.
At some SIO Township resident. Once again, I'll ask a lot of questions during this opening comment and I would appreciate a response. I see that item H ten is in the consent agenda for a team building professional to consult with our officers to improve the working environment here in Township Hall. Thank you, Jim Fink, for finding and recommending this resource. I urge the entire board to take advantage of this opportunity so you all benefit from the process. The budget has been the focus of the last several board meetings. Please make the development of an R F P process a priority in the next few months. For decades, SIO has chosen not to put contracts out to bid. I believe that this has led to the current situation of having a deficit in the budget. Just a few weeks ago, you all met to establish priorities. Residents have been asking for contracts to go out to bid for the last few years. By making it a priority, you will improve the budget process for next year and show residents you really are trying to save money by making contractors bid competitively. Last fall, the board made Kristi Akin all but interim manager. Since that action, you have continued to add to the workload you have asked her to take on without increasing the pay bump you established last fall. The increased workload means Kristi truly is the interim manager now. That combined with the dysfunction on this board means that the workload has significantly increased, especially since she is the only buffer between the dysfunction of the board and employees. I asked you to address the shortfall several weeks ago. None of you ever responded. As trustee Noel, it could take at least sixteen months to find her director of operations. I believe she is right. Therefore, you need to pay Kristi as the interim manager now, and you should backdate it to catch up her pay to the increased workload that has been in place for the last couple of months. Speaking of pay, where is the salary study that began last year or the year before that was going to be the basis of finally having performance reviews and performance raises for SIO employees? The Compensation Commission just wrapped up its biannual task of taking care of the trustees, the clerk, the treasurer, and the supervisor. So what is this board going to do to make it, to take care of the people who work for you and the residents? And more importantly, when are you going to do it? I will remind this board that no employees have had a performance review or raise in the last eleven years. COLA has been the only pay increase they have had, so they are making the same amount they were eleven years ago. As the Compensation Commission shared during their deliberations, the clerk and treasurer positions got forty nine and fifty percent increases from 2016 to 2025. The trustees have had an increase of forty eight percent between 2016 and 2025. For the last three years, the authorized position lists say the supervisor position is full time. They were all approved and adopted by the previous board. The Compensation Commission agreed and have recommended the supervisor is full time and the pay should be eighty two five. Yes, that is a substantial increase of fifty six percent over the part time pay of 2016, but it is still far less than what the treasurer clerk positions are making now, who got their big pay bumps in 2019 and 2023. So the board is taken care of with substantial increases over the last nine years. What is this board going to do to make it right for employees? At a recent meeting, the clerk said, remember, we have a deficit. When I asked if the proposal for employees to pay twenty percent of their healthcare coverage would be offset in their pay so it wasn't a pay cut, expecting to make up for poor planning and budgeting by making employees take a pay cut is no way to lead a team, especially when that pay cut would lessen the deficit by less than one percent. Tonight, many hands is on the agenda. I fully support having this kind of facility in SIO. However, there are some red flags with this proposal. First of all, based on the information provided, the Planning Commission voted to deny recommendation. Many hands should have fixed their proposal and taken it back to the Planning Commission so that when it came before the board, it had the Planning Commission's recommendation. Sadly, that never happened because the applicant decided to ignore the Planning Commission's concerns and go straight to the board. Second, our most vulnerable citizens are the ones this application is intended to assist. Designing the proposal to avoid state licensing and regulation should be a huge red flag to this board. Yes, Carrie has the best of intentions and is a fantastic leader of this effort. But what happens when she is gone? What about ten years from now? What about twenty years? The only way residents of SIO can know that the people at many hands are being taken care of and protected is with oversight. At a board meeting a month ago, Carrie said the Waschnach Community Mental Health Department will have oversight of this facility. Where is this information in the proposal? What exactly will the county have oversight of? Will it be more or less vigorous than the state? What oversight is involved in state licensing and regulation? Where is the documentation? I think it is a mistake to allow the avoidance of oversight by making it four residents per building because five residents per building would mean they have to involve the state. Please make sure whatever facility gets approved has the most protection possible for the people who live there. If it requires the application to go back to the Planning Commission, so be it. This board is the final step in protecting these residents, and I think this vote will be one of the most important, if not the most important vote this current board will have over the next four years. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Paula Globerson, longtime SIO. I'm going to hit on a couple of different things. First off, I really dislike when people have their cell phones and their constant. I know you're not doing it, but some people sit there and stare at it for long periods of time and are. It's, I tell my sons when they were teenagers, not at the dinner table. So I think, yeah, you can leave it on for emergencies, but I would appreciate that. I think it's rude, first off, inappropriate. But anyway. The next thing is the many hands. I agree with Rob about the state licensure. I wonder if, is that going to be a tax exempt? Yeah, because I asked and she was a good employee and she didn't tell me the last time I was here. Andrea, I said, is that going to be tax exempt? See, I always place myself in certain positions. But anyway, and then the next thing, because we're going to have our six story. And I'm not against the housing thing there. But I go, how much is that going to cost us in the sewer to, for pumping up all that pipes? And the amount of people, as you all know, I keep going, the sewer is the sewer, even prior to a lot of people being here on the board. Big concern for us that are, well, for the whole township and all the businesses along there. And the mission statement of the DDA, I'd like to really know what it is. Because Donna Palmer said, hey, it's, they, they're supposed to keep the Jackson Road running, basically. And I see, you know, oh, we're going to pay for the fire. I've said this before. And out of that fire village, we got two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. They got a big stash of money and maybe they should be doing some stuff up and down on the sewer here. So just one of my peeves. And personally, I wouldn't have a DDA because I don't see us having a downtown authority here. And I haven't seen them do too much other than Ryan could, our treasurer could inform me more. Secondly, or thirdly, as far as, I had an issue with this supervisor when Will Hathaway did it, is how he appointed people, especially on the Planning Commission, when that was three different people. And, and I keep hearing, oh, we're a general law township. Well, then what, you know, I don't know what the statute is. I didn't bother to look it up. I was busy here running around doing some other things today. I go, and yes, you can vote it up or down. But I look at people and I say, hey, Jonathan had applied twice. And then if your rationale about people being on the, that they're already on a committee, I have a big issue then with Linda Smith. She, she goes until September of 2025 on the road commission. And she, so maybe you can address that as you go through those people. And I don't know the lady who Kathleen, but reading over the agenda packet and I saw those letters back and forth, I go, I've, I've had a problem with the whole thing anyway. I think all those people should be up. And I don't think the supervisor should get that. And I felt that way about the five thousand dollars too, that without any, I realized that was supposed to be for emergencies. But it hasn't always gone that way in this township. And then another thing, so, you know, I look at it as, we look about affordable housing. Well, when you keep making, if we have a TIF over here and we have an exemption over there and is Dave Lutton. I watched the Dexter, I watched the Dexter Township meetings and they changed their rule. I spoke to you about that, Julian. So they've changed their own situation. I wanted that all shared, that, that they can go directly to the land order. They don't have to come to the township and discuss with you all. And that was done, I, I think they might have had one more meeting since. I have to go back. I have too many things to watch. I thought, oh, great, we got a new township board. I won't have to do that. And as far as the budget, I thought Kathleen Brant did an excellent job. When I am on a team of professionals, sometimes somebody else may be better at something than I am. And that's what a team is about. So you choose, and it's not to say, Julian, that you won't know later. Ryan Yapple brought up the fact that we had some of these reports from the, that the heads come in late. So, you know, you had a deadline to get a lot of these things done. And, and because I see, and I know this is some people's priority is to have some, and I saw a disc, I actually had to participate in that up in a different hospital than University of Michigan. People are going to disagree. And to me, we don't have to call in mental health. Professionals should be able to sit down and agree to disagree on certain issues. And when you do have a vote, to me, that's a vote. You're all supposed to have equal share. So, I mean, I don't get into all the statutory duties and, and like the great Lebowski said, or big Lebowski, just my opinion. So, man. But, you know, my priority is the sewer. Period. Sewer and water. And I want to hear, have it placed on the web. Period. Sewer and water. And I wanna hear, have it placed on the website when we are gonna have the Eagle hearing about the Dino Drive with the PFAS down there.
They haven't responded yet.
Okay, but when they do, I would like it put on there because, you know, we have a big pollution problem. That's a priority. It's been a priority. I worked on for, you know, forty years, I think, almost. So, I think people need to be aware of what is going on. It's just transparency. And we, and yeah, I know there's behind the scenes working on, working with Ann Arbor for the water and the different things that we may need. And I realize certain things can't always be public, but as much as they can be, I think they should be. And, but I did have, I have a big problem with the appointments. Not the people, but if they don't even have their resume, I don't care if they've been on there. Every person should have their stuff in that applies for a committee, period. And if you don't, because that was, remember Abby? He didn't have his stuff in, and there was a big to-do about that. I don't remember, I got Abby Hoffman in the brain, and that's what's not his last name. Shows you my, my age. And that's about it. I'm sure I'm, I'll think of something, something else as we go along.
Good evening. Or should I say happy new year? Kat Stein, longtime resident of Syo Township. I just lost my page. All right. So some of you may remember, three and a half years ago, when David Reed and I partnered to recall our previous supervisor, when he deviously doubled the salary for his part-time position as Syo Supervisor claiming it was a full-time position. Many Syo residents mirrored our outrage at Super Hathaway's doubling his salary and signed up recall position. These hundreds of signers include some of the residents in attendance in this room, some of the members of the current board, and some of those who are now logged into Zoom. The agenda for tonight's meeting includes the Compensation Commission's recommendations to the board for increases to each of the board positions. Thank you to the members of the Compensation Commission on your recommendations on salary increases for the positions of Treasurer, Clerk, and the four Trustees. Your recommendations are reasonable and warranted. However, your recommendation to double the supervisor's salary begs the question, is your recommendation based on the part-time position of supervisor or the person holding the part-time position of supervisor? Yep, here we are again, facing the doubling of a supervisor's salary for a part-time position. The position of supervisor is a part-time job and has always been part-time. In twenty twenty-two, Supervisor Hathaway even admitted in writing that his duties as supervisor was indeed a part-time position. And he accepted the recommended part-time salary. The duties as part-time supervisor have not changed. I understand that our current supervisor has been putting in a lot of hours at Township Hall. I'm not at all surprised. Because a new job with more responsibilities than the previous position of trustee typically result in a learning curve of ninety days or so. Volunteering additional hours during a learning curve of a part-time position does not automatically make that a full-time position. Anyone looking for a full-time, for a full-time pay should consider applying for a full-time job. Last year, the open position of Syo Township Supervisor was described as a part-time position. The salary determined by the previous Compensation Committee, Commission was for the position of part-time supervisor. Candidates, including our current supervisor, campaigned for the position of part-time supervisor. I repeat, Syo Township has a part-time supervisor. The position has always been as a part-time supervisor. The duties for a part-time supervisor have remained unchanged. If it looks like a part-time duck, walks like a part-time duck, it damn well is nothing more than a part-time duck. I respectfully request that the members of this board approve the salary recommendations put forward by the Compensation Commission, with the exception of their recommendation to double the salary of our part-time supervisor. I strongly suggest members of the Compensation Commission go back to the table and reconsider their salary recommendations based on the position of part-time supervisor. Thank you.
And Court Flintoff, the fact that you received something so weird and threatening is just so outrageous. And it should be reported to the authorities because there are laws in this state, actually, maybe nationally, that protect employees and workers from harassment, threats, bullying. It's, it's just outrageous. It should not be accepted, especially in Syo Township. And I'm sorry that you have received something like that. You deserve much better.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Kill. I own a condominium with my husband. And I'm here, because I'm Lindsay's mom. Lindsay is a thirty-seven-year-old adult with intellectual disabilities. Who has lived in Syo Township since, I believe it was twenty-ten, when we first started this process. And now she lives at Summerfield Glen in the loosely-held organization called ICW, Intentional Communities of Wasna. Since then, it, she had moved there in twenty fourteen, so we've been property owners and with a house. And I believe we came before this board one time because of the, the living situation at the house. We thought we might qualify for property tax exemption. And we were literally told, if you can't afford to live in Syo Township, don't live there. We did take, we did take the board to the, I forgot what they called it, the intermediary and won. But then Syo Township changed the rules. So we ended up at the condominium and it has been a very good experience. And quite by accident, I got to know Carrie Caffadian, and I have been listening to her for five or six years about the Many Hands Life Sharing Community concept. So the gentleman, this is why I came to say something, really struck a chord with me. And I think there might be a misconception here in terms of what a Many Hands Life Sharing Community is. I am a mom, I'm a business owner, I own a community living-supported contracted agency with Wasna County. I also contracted the state of Michigan for community living supports for people with intellectual disabilities. I bill one weekly, I bill one monthly. We hire staff. It is an independent living arrangement. Many Hands Life Sharing Community, I think the concept of a licensure type of thing came and went for many, many, many hundreds of years, I believe. When they closed the state licensing facilities, and I think it was nineteen eighty-seven, they said, uh-uh, we're gonna do community living. Many Hands, I have listened to Carrie probably every day of my life for so many years, is about housing. If you have not experienced a severely autistic person and what it's like to live with them and how confined they are in their home, they have to have one-on-one care, the parent can't go anywhere. If you let them, you know, I'm just gonna be blunt here. If you let them loose sometimes in the community, sometimes they need two people. Sometimes they call the police. And that's just like, for starters. So, so if you're gonna do an independent living community, you have to have the supports that come with it. And that, the Many Hands Life Sharing Community has a unique design for, I mean, I've been in this business. My daughter's thirty-seven years old. And I have seen all of it. I coached Special Olympics. When these adult people have the correct setting and the correct supports, they thrive. They have lives, they can provide meaningful education to people that come to work for them. I've had somebody go be a doctor. I've had somebody go to be an OT. I've had social workers. Now I have a nurse that's coming through in my staff. I've had staff work for me for fifteen years, ten years, and I think one's going on six. So we have a stable situation, but I believe in this concept like nothing else. And I don't think, it's what you, how it looks from the outside isn't exactly how it works from the inside. And I think that we have found a way to make it work. And Many Hands is very similar to what I'm doing, only it's on a larger scale and it provides the housing. And also the care, which is, I mean, when you're putting up a subdivision, I'm pretty sure you don't go knocking on people's doors to see how they're living. So these people have the right, our IDD people have the right to live in their own home of their choosing in their community. And by congregating them together in this wonderful concept, the farm concept, the cafe concept, it's just, it's like a miracle. And if you're a parent, you have zero choice to have, especially the higher-needs, special needs people, which my daughter is one, you have a choice of them living separately from you. I was just at my mom's at CRC tonight, and she's just pushing my kid button still. She's eighty-nine years old. I'm sixty-five. I'm like, you shouldn't live with your parent. And when those kids end up independent like my daughter did and the other thirty-five people that I know from over at ICW, they blossom. They affect communities, they affect lives, they affect futures. And should a parent all of a sudden drop a heart attack, there's somewhere for them to live. I have four clients with Fragile X Syndrome. That, their dad, boom, gone. They still live together in the home with their mom. Their mom had a stroke. Their cousins had to go take over. I helped them build a program. This is not in this county. And it helped them put together what they needed to care for these guys, but there was no backup. A community like this, there's other places around the country that is doing this. They have been highly successful, highly successful. And there's no talk about what's their license and what's, you know, the right and all that stuff. This is, this is part of an existing structure, and I just wanted to make sure that I pointed that out. And to tell you that I'm sitting here, anybody can ask me anything they want, and I've been doing this for a pretty long time now. And I still see, while my daughter Lindsay has a pretty solid life, I'm sixty-five. She even has six siblings, right? There's seven of us. And they're not gonna care for her the way I care for her. If we don't start today, the almost certain future for these guys is not, it's not pretty. And I know it's a big project. I know it's, it's, it's a kind of a off-the-beaten-path type of thing, but I think it's a really big consideration. And I hope that this dream comes true for all of us parents. I think that's it. Thank you. Dead squirrel, K-I-L-L. I know.
Jeff Jackson, longtime Syo resident, member of the Compensation Commission. I thought Chair Boyd gave an excellent summary of our work during public comment, and I had not planned to add to it. But given a recent comment, I felt like I should add a little perspective to what we did with regard to deciding salary numbers to present to you tonight. So first off, I well remember twenty twenty-one and what went down there. And I was equally outraged with what happened and how it was gone about just as much. Well, we have a process now. We have a commission. We are tasked with determining an appropriate salary for the elected positions. I can assure you, we discussed the adjustment to the supervisor's salary at length. And you can watch the videos and you can read the minutes to see exactly how much we talked about it. So just to clarify, because this came up several times, Attorney Fink reminded us many times, our job as the commission was not to determine whether the supervisor role was part-time or full-time. Our job was to provide a number. We were allowed to use any methodology we wished to reach that number. We used what I believe was a fair and consistent process. We borrowed a lot from the previous commission, their methodology. We didn't have to, but we liked it. So we said, yes, we will go about this. When it came to discussing the supervisor's role, I said this myself to the commission. This is going to be controversial. But I believe, based upon the best available evidence we have, that an adjustment was necessary. By that, I mean perhaps the statutory duties of the supervisor has not changed since last time. On the other hand, I believe, and I believe my fellow commissioners agree, that the workload has increased. And that the current supervisor is not only going through this learning curve, but is taking on more of the activities that, I don't want to disparage the previous supervisor, but I do believe, based on the best available evidence, that he was not necessarily fulfilling all the duties laid out by statutory and by ordinance. I believe Supervisor Carrie is, again, we were very, very careful to evaluate the role and not the person in the role. There is, there was none of that. And again, we were reminded of that during our work. So, our number, it's a big adjustment. We believe it was fair, based upon the best available evidence. The township is growing. Workloads are growing. So that was the basis of our decision. I would also just like to point out that even if we wanted to go back and reconsider our number, we are not allowed to do so. By Michigan law, we had to be done yesterday. We had that extra meeting last Wednesday. It was intended to be an extra meeting because we really thought we needed more time to deliberate. As it turns out, we reached consensus faster than we thought, and we were able to finish our work on Wednesday. I, I really thought we'd be, we'd have another meeting on Friday to wrap things up. As it turned out, we didn't need to do so. But our work is complete. We have provided the numbers. I'm not going to recommend the board vote one way or the other. I am just saying, we did our work. There are the numbers.
Thank you for your work, Jeff. Appreciate it. Anyone else in township hall that would like to speak? Anyone online? Please raise your Zoom hand if you'd like to speak. First up is Pam Boyd, followed by Andrea Garrett. Pam?
Thank you, Pam Boyd. I'd like to say how horrified I am that Clerk Flintoff received this nasty gram and that I hope that this board puts as a, a top priority to get surveillance cameras to be put around Township Hall so that this does not happen again. Thank you.
Next up is Andrea Garrett. Andrea?
Hi, guys. Can you hear me? Okay, great. I just wanted to chime in that I was shocked and saddened to hear that this note was delivered to you, Jessica. I hope the individual responsible for this is caught and dealt with in an appropriate manner. As an employee of the township, we should all be respectful and kind to each other. Life is hard enough. I wish I could just reach out and give you a hug on this. It saddens me that this happened. Stay strong, Jeff, and I'll see all you guys in the morning. That's it.
Thanks a lot, Andrea. That's our assessor. Thanks, Andrea. Anybody else like to speak? Please raise your Zoom hand. Seeing no other hands, Julie, have any?
We got twenty-eight people here.
Did have two people respond with facts.
Response to public comment?
Oh, yes, sure.
I will add the mission statement to the DDA meeting in March that is gonna be scheduled to that is going to be scheduled to a slightly different date than is on the website. We'll keep that updated. Hopefully get that fixed the next day or two if it isn't fixed already. And then to Rob's question specifically about the salary review, I do know that Robert Stover has been here. I've seen some of their staff members interviewing department heads. They've had a bunch of meetings over the last three or four weeks, so hopefully we'll have a report back from them soon.
Anyone else?
Yes.
You have the salary study?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Let's start.
Paula, I have my timer on. I'm just monitoring how long people do.
Yeah, well, people can always cut me off. I think it was in, the way it was done in the pass board, it was like, like a cutting people off in mid-sentence. It was a disgustingly rude thing that was going on there. And I don't mind people saying, hey, because I don't sit there and look at the time. Because we get our three to five minutes on these very important things that cost us all a lot of money.
Oh, I just did just, yeah, very, very brief response to a factual question. Rob Pattinson, the authorized position list has no declaration of whether elected officials are full-time or part-time. As the person who authored that chart, who keeps it with Aurora, and the person who's written that free resolution that adopts it, that is not the meaning. It says, you know, for example, clerk, one clerk authorized by statute. So it is not a FTE or any calculation of that. There's a person, sort of like other ones say three part-time people and things. So it is authorized by the state. You'll look over two or three columns to the right and see that, and that is not what that means. That's all.
So it lists four trustees.
Yeah, it'll say four trustees and then authorized.
So if you want to give me a full-time salary, I will turn it down.
But it's just not, clarifying, not the meaning of it. So thank you. Just the rest of the employees are supposed to be like part-time, point six, one full-time. So, yeah, and then, and I'll just. It doesn't explain that about the elected officials, which the board has adopted. The elected officials are authorized by the state and that's made clear. Certainly, as the person who's, you know, we can always improve the chart for clarity, but that's never been anyone's understanding, meaning effect or intention. That's, this is actually the first I've heard that interpretation. So just wanted to clarify that. Anyone else? Okay, moving on. Let's see, approval of the minutes. Is there a second?
Support by Riser.
Are there any corrections, changes? No? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? No. Motion passes. Onto consent agenda and.
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Um, amended.
Oh, as amended.
And I support the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
How are we spending money?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Roll call vote, please. Roll call votes. Per rules of order, tonight we're starting with Yable. Yable?
Yes.
Flintoff, yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Consent agenda adopted, seven zeros.
Okay, let's see.
Can I just point out, no one to talk about or do that? I might leave early tonight because I'm a little beat. I'm having some medical procedures done and it's kicking my butt.
Sure.
And this is after a two-hour nap, so just FYI. So no disrespect intended. If things get heated and I'm out, nothing personal, folks.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you have any requests for our agenda, John, of things you want to handle?
No, just get along, vote on things copacetically.
Okay, thank you.
And just a suggestion, as the evening evolves, I think we should take the pulse of the group, maybe at ten o'clock or so. See where we are and there might be, knowing John wants to leave at eleven P M.
Let's maybe, or let's just. Keep rolling and see how we go. I hear you.
Let's see where we are because we've got some items on here that could take a very long time and we are not going to have control over that. We may have to do part of an item, put it off to the next agenda.
At the top of the next agenda, that's according to the vote.
That would be fine.
Yep, it's the rules of order and we should be following them. Okay, so on to consent, we have done reports. Clerk Flintoff, there was the WARMO and the sheriff report. Yes, and the center report from Kathy, also a memo, a deputy clerk, Barb Calaja, brief summary of what will be happening with the Special Dexter School District election. But I have no, no other comments. Anyone else have a report?
Or the planning commission?
Sure.
The planning commission met last night and they are, they're interested in the members being educated. They offer classes for us, which is commendable. They have taken initiative to bring one person in to do a group session on, the topic would be getting the development you want. So we could individually take that. The idea is that it's presented at the township as a public meeting, as an educational thing, which seems like a good idea. It's, it's one and a half hours. They're requesting, or we are requesting that the board consider attending that.
That'd be great.
And we have two potential dates targeted. This would be the off weeks from when the planning commission and the board of trustees typically meets. So the suggestion is one, March the seventeenth, which is St. Patty's Day. No beer allowed. Or March the thirty-first and also suggested start time at six P M. So that's on the table. If you have any feedback, I guess, give it to me.
Thank you. It's a great idea.
And I have something from P A P. Murphy wanted to report that the attendance at the volunteer signup, there were twenty-one completed with five new volunteers. So it was, yes, they were very eagerly going and so that was what she wanted to share.
Awesome, thanks. Thank you. It was the mixer, the volunteer mixer.
Yes. With snacks.
Yeah, it was lovely. Great. Okay, finish with reports. Moving on to public hearing. This is, yeah, public hearing on the adoption of the F Y E twenty twenty-six budget of Sciouacan Township. And there were a few, well, there was a budget that was, that's included. The authorized positions and assessor MCAT position. And let's see. I guess this is trustee Brandt?
Sure. This, the purpose of a public hearing is to get feedback from the public. So I have provided sort of a summary document that talks about the process, where we're at in the process, some budget assumptions that went into the numbers, things like pension calculated at eight percent of salary, O P A B calculated at three point five percent. Revenue and expenses increased across budget year by two and a half percent. Property tax going up like three point one. I also added the current status, where we're at. The board has spent a great deal of time on this. So I put in the estimated general fund revenues, the working approved expenditures for the general fund and that shows that we're in a deficit. Eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So my intent is, or I believe the board's intent is to continue working on the budget, inserting another, a special meeting so that we can continue working on that to try to reduce the deficit. And I just want to point out that this whole process has been well-planned and well-executed. Great deal of work has been accomplished by the department heads, the finance staff, H R, the office coordinator and the entire board. The work is appreciated in the final stages of completion. There's still work to be done. I do not intend to go through the entire budget tonight. The purpose is for the public to ask questions and answer, answer those questions as best we can.
That's great. That, that, what's included here is the actual, you know, budget itself and all of its details. Since we last saw it, we're at this table, all of the fringe and salary detail is all fully loaded. Also included is the updated authorized position sheet. And if everybody will see, we have kind of a working approved budget. That's our working column, both on the authorized position sheet and here. And we, I also have the twenty, F Y E twenty-six cost allocation methodology, you know, for review. And as Kathleen said, there's a proposed special meeting next so that we can take some time to dig into it. As Kathleen notes, we have a general fund working deficit of eight hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and ninety-five dollars. We have a lot of work to do, but not proposing to do that work tonight.
Is this just the preamble to opening your public hearing?
Yes, it is. And the supervisor has stepped away for a moment, so in her absence, I'll continue facilitating. I would like to, if it's okay to open the public hearing unless the board wants to. I would like to open the public hearing at eight oh three P M. This, again, is the public hearing duly posted on the adoption of the F Y E twenty twenty-six budget of Sciouacan Township. Any member of the public who's here who'd like to speak specifically on this proposed budget, you have up to five minutes to share your comments and questions. Is there anyone public who would like here in person who would like to speak at this time?
I'm excited because.
Thank you, Daryl.
Actually, as a number of.
Wonderful.
Okay, so what I'd like to talk about this evening is we have already addressed the issue of whether or not we feel that it's appropriate to charge indirect costs to the land preservation fund. I see that Clerk Flintoff and counsel and the finance director met, I assume, based on the note, and discussed it. What I wanted to do briefly with that issue is first voice that I, you came to the conclusion that indirect cost could be or is allowed to be charged to land preservation fund. I will say that I strongly disagree. I stand by my arguments. I am also disappointed that I was not a part of that meeting. I think back and forth communication and dialogue is important to explore all the perspectives dealing with this issue. But the decision's been made and as I stated last time, I will defer to counsel. And so I'm officially setting that subject aside. So now, so now I'm going to, I want to address specifically the cost allocation methodology. I submitted a memo November twenty-fourth that addressed my concerns with the methodology in general. I'm now going to specifically deal with how it impacts us and its application to us. In the cost of, cost allocation methodology for the open space, you are looking at two different criteria. Accounting or funds or activities, accounting and information technology. Under the accounting, I have an issue. There's three different criteria that you look at. You look at the relative number of employees by fund. I'm fine with that. That's payroll. Payroll's nasty.
Zero, zero for open space.
It's zero for open space. Even if it was, if we had an employee payroll, you know, it's time-consuming. There's another one for relative number of cash dispersments by the fund. I think that's a fair criteria because it measures the amount of time that finance is having to spend, cutting checks, recording checks. You may actually even turn that into a broader thing of the number of general journal entries that need to be made because there are a lot of entries that don't involve cash and it's time-consuming. So I agree with that one as well. The one that I do not agree with is the relative amount of numbers spent averaged over the past two that consecutive or calendar.
Consecutive calendar years averaged.
Yeah, so the C Y is consecutive. Well, call it calendar year. Okay, by the fund. My argument with that is that does not reflect the amount of time that's spent on a fund or an activity. A check that is cut for a million dollars takes no more time to process than a check cut for thousand dollars. And in my opinion, using that criteria, what you're really doing is trying to measure how well or easily a fund may absorb a cost, not an actual measurement of the time spent servicing the activity. So to give you a different, another perspective in that, I want to talk about our fund. In our fund, in a typical month, if we don't have any real estate closing, in a typical month, we might have two to four cash dispersments. And we might have three to five additional journal entries that need to be posted either for interest income, cost allocation entries, you know, any other little entries. So we might have ten entries a month. That can pretty much be recorded within an hour. So we have an hour a month. And then if we have a real estate transaction, there are approximately five additional cash dispersments that may be made. If you look at environmental assessment, survey appraisal, legal, and then the actual purchase. So this year with our current budget, we are being assessed approximately twelve thousand dollars in cost allocation fees. And it's based on the activities of the last, it involves, based on this particular criteria, the activities for the last two years where there is no real estate transactions. If you look at our current budget and eliminate the real estate acquisition cost and the closing cost, we have a budget of approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Now let's say that, so for that hundred thousand dollars, we have a charge of twelve thousand dollars in cost allocation. So let's say for the next two years, we're successful and we're able to close on four properties at five hundred thousand dollars apiece. That's two, two million dollars, an average of a million dollars a year. If that average of a million dollars is added to that one hundred thousand dollars, we are suddenly dealing with a measurement criteria that is eleven times more than what we've had before. So if you take that eleven times, twelve thousand dollars, we're dealing with a cost allocation of a hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars. And how much was the additional workload? It would be twenty journal entries that might take two hours to post. This is not a good measurement criteria. It does not reflect the actual workload. And in by not reflecting the actual workload, it actually falls in violation of the ordinance language that I probably hammered to you all before about the devoted directly language. But if you look at, for example, under section sixteen dash three one six, it states that no part of the fund may be transferred to any other fund, nor be encumbered, nor be utilized for any purpose except the purposes specifically set forth in this article. So charging a fee or charging a fund based on the size of their expenditures, that's not going to fit in with the purposes of the article. And if you look at related costs for section sixteen. And if you look at related costs for section sixteen dash three one four, it provides and allows for costs for things like appraisals, engineering, finance, but it has to be lawfully incurred incident upon an activity. Charging a fund for the size of its expenditures does not do that. What is, what is being, the cost that is being incurred incident, incident to the activity is the time it takes to make the journal entries and to cut the checks. That's the cost, not the size of the check. And then if you go to section sixteen dash three one nine, which is actually the section that is referenced in your note, saying that it supports the allocation of indirect costs. In addition to utilize or using the devoted directly language, it says that reasonable administrative expenses can be paid and the following activities shall be considered administrative expenses. And it states specifically staff or consultant time devoted directly to the acquisition process. Staff or consultant time that is devoted directly to program support. When you're using a criteria that is not measuring time, that is measuring the size of the fund, that falls in violation of this language. So that's what my concerns with the accounting portion of this is.
Over eight minutes.
Oh, I'm so sorry. It's just because I just haven't had a chance to have the back and forth dialogue on this issue. So, okay, I'll stop it there. We also have an issue with the, the technology, but this is the big one. This is the big one. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, Daryl.
And Jessica, I'm sorry, it's what's happening.
And, and, and I do really want to, as much as Daryl and I might agree on some things and disagree on some things, I want to really thank Daryl, who has been probably the most engaged on the cost allocation plan. Which is, you know, something we could talk about for two hours and maybe we could set some time to do that at the special meeting if people are interested in doing the equations together.
Except I, I am leaving on March seventh for Tanzania, so.
Good for you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Daryl. Appreciate it.
Is it the wildebeest running?
Pardon?
Are the wildebeest running?
Yes, they are.
And anyone else?
Anyone else want to speak?
And that's present? Who's present? Do you like to, any, for just the public hearing? No? Okay.
Anybody online, please raise your Zoom hand. Regarding the proposed budget, the proposed F Y E twenty six budget.
Eighteen. Okay. So. I missed it, I'm sorry. Well, I guess this public hearing for the budget is closed.
At eight fourteen P M.
You said? Thank you. There's a blair on that clock and there my, my time. Open my clock over here. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to unfinished business, item K one, call for a special meeting to deliberate on the proposed F Y E twenty six budget. Did everyone bring their on schedule?
And I, I just wanted to, you know, suggest as, you know, this special meeting, if you could pull out your calendars, we, Christie's got some potential days.
I do.
That would work for the room and where plant Moran would also be available. I would imagine this would be roll up our sleeves and really start finishing the budget.
So the first date is Monday, March third at two P M. And these are all the dates and times that plan is available, but two o'clock on Tuesday, March fourth, two o'clock on Wednesday, March fifth from eleven A M on. And one that I hope you don't pick is March seventh from two o'clock on. That's a Friday.
We're picking that one then.
I shouldn't even have said it, but it's.
You're so responsible.
Well, I have. You, I'm sorry, Wednesday.
So Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Monday and Tuesday both starting at two P M. And then Wednesday, we could start at eleven.
So Tuesday the fourth, we have a management meeting?
That's.
At one thirty?
Yeah. I could adjust that.
Okay.
Well. We can, I can do that. We can do that every day even.
We have our development review meeting.
Yeah.
On Tuesday the fourth.
And I have word of review.
That's at eleven.
It's at eleven, yeah. And I've got something at two thirty and something at four. And I have the card meeting at ten A M on Tuesday the fourth, so Tuesday's out.
Monday. Two o'clock on. I'm available.
What, no, what day?
Monday at two?
The fourth, the third.
The third.
Six station.
Yes.
Pardon me?
Yes. Monday, March third.
And, and I just want to say, we could also do it in the evening. It's sort of a balance.
That's why I said on, so.
Because there may be some staff who want to participate, so it's better during the day. I also want to make sure it's available to the public. But I think it's, personally, I think it's okay, an okay meeting to have in kind of the afternoon as long as we publicly.
I have Monday and Wednesday open at this point.
What about you, John and Kathy?
I could do it late on Monday. What time is late for you? Say four P M or later during the day.
I mean, also Wednesday afternoon seems open. Ryan and Judy.
It's around.
Yeah, time of May.
I'm with me too.
I can't do it on Wednesday afternoon.
Okay.
I've got a whole bunch of things scheduled for next week.
Okay. How about Monday? Yeah.
So the department has to do one of them.
Yeah. John, how's that for you?
I might have to take someone to the airport that, that, that time slot, but I could find out. I can just drop him off early.
Don't worry about it, John. I'll cover you, you for the budget.
Are you gonna drop my body up at the airport?
Okay.
Yeah, just, no, just, I'll make it if I can make it.
What, what time are we talking about now?
Four P M.
What day?
Monday.
I'd like to make a motion to call a special meeting of the board of trustees for the purpose of deliberating on the proposed F Y E twenty six township budget on Monday, March third at four P M.
On second. Okay. Doesn't matter, we all.
It's this.
Oh, somebody choose. A second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Wait. Yeah, okay, we just took a vote.
Yes.
He's asking one time.
Okay.
Great. I'll send out the notice. Thanks, Christie. Thanks, Shillian.
Thank you. The next P two, H VAC replacement update. And.
Chris Chang and Chris Jane should be on.
And Caleb.
And Caleb's here. Hi, Caleb.
Jan here as well. Anybody up for expecting?
Dan and Chris Chang, I think they're both on.
I see Chris Chang. Jan, I'm not seeing you.
Chris was supposed to let her know because she had.
She might be the initial J H. Is that you, Jan?
Put your hand up.
Yep, raise your hand up.
Zoom in.
All right. Chris is here and we got somebody. Yes. I think this is Jan.
Does anybody have Jan's number?
We got her.
She's on, or she is, okay.
All right. Hi, Chris and Jan.
I don't think we can hear them.
I can hear them a little bit.
They weren't really talking that much.
Can you hear us?
Yeah, light, but we can hear you.
Light, all right, I'll talk a little louder then.
There.
Okay, good.
Hear me, okay?
Glad you made it, Jan. I, I've been texting and I did call Jan just to make sure to let her know that we were coming up next. So I'll, I'll give a, a brief summary on where we're at. This is for the three H VAC rooftop units that are on the original portion of the township hall. As you may recall, that I think on January seventeenth at our B O T meeting, we had extended the deadline date for some of the contractors to submit bids. We only received one bid by the February sixth deadline. That bid did come in at one point eight five million dollars, which was approximately a million dollars over what we had initially budgeted for, for the replacement. And this is for the geothermal option that was chosen by the board of trustees. Since that time, we did have our, our H VAC subcommittee, we did meet with the internally just to discuss how we were off on some of our estimates. And it turns out, and I know Caleb from Inclination Engineering is there, he could probably get into a little more depth about some of the data that he used that, you know, for some reason was just off on all of the, the bidding from the contractor. But then we also met later on with the contractor and just to discuss some of the, the, the items on there. One of them, we think we can bring that bid down just from the taxes alone because we're exempt. So we're really going from one point eight five million down to approximately one point six million. And then we also started in with the calculations. We have some direct pay at forty percent and a, a grant that would also be approximately ninety two thousand dollars. So as kind of a, an approximate estimate, we think the geothermal will be a little under a million dollars and it was something like a nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. We also looked into another type of rooftop replacement and that was a dual fuel rooftop unit replacement. And that one also, which would require a lot less, I think, you know, duct work and, and, you know, equipment and changes. But that one still came in around nine hundred thousand dollars and that one wasn't nearly as efficient either and would not qualify for the, the direct pay. So we're still finding ourselves over budget and these are, and I want to remind everyone, these are approximations. But we're really looking at possibly getting some direction from the board. Do you want us to go with the geothermal? Would you like us to explore the, you know, the dual fuel option? And we are looking at possibly, you know, we're requesting thirty thousand dollars on either of the options to do some value engineering. This wouldn't be above and beyond the, the prices that I've given you around nine hundred thousand dollars. And if there's more specific questions, that's just kind of how we, where we're at and how we've gotten here. But I know Jan and Caleb are here if there's real specific questions on the actual types of units, if you have questions.
I am good. Go ahead.
Well, let's start on the right, my right. Rusty Brand?
Yeah, I would. I would like to know why the estimate was half of the cost. I, I haven't heard any details on that. We actually paid, we paid for an estimate. We paid a good amount of money. So why was the estimate so far off?
And I know Caleb is there if he wants to possibly tackle that.
Hey, Caleb.
Yeah, that was really disappointing. There were a couple of larger rules of, of like that the cost broke down on. I was on the bidding team as the engineer, but did not have full access to the contractors individual costs. So I was sort of a member of their team, but I didn't have all the breakdown of all the costs. But I did call Jeff Dar and he shared some of the, the, the higher numbers with me. And so there were some of them that I thought, hmm, that's the contractor bid a lot more on that than I thought that was going to cost. Electrical was one of those. He was also sort of telling me, this has been happening a lot. We have seen costs increasing a lot. But I don't think that quite explains a full million dollars over. The way I do the cost estimating is I look at, all right, how many feet of pipe do we think we'll have? How many feet of duct work? There's an online, online database of, you know, all right, here's an updated this year. Here's the cost per foot. And that software has, that database has not been doing very well in the last several times that I've done that estimate and we've gotten bids coming back. So I think that the costs have increased a lot faster than that software has kept up with. So that was a component of the study that we did was cost estimating. And I do think that it at least helped to give a relative value if it didn't give the, I mean, I, yeah, it was much farther off than I would have hoped for and would have liked. I'd like to say those are ballparks and, and being a million dollars and half the price is not in the ballpark. But I do hope that was at least that they showed the relative costs by comparing them all in the same database. And so if the contractors' costs are a lot higher, at least relatively, excellent.
I'm sorry. So are, is the project team recommending that we spend another thirty thousand dollars to get a better handle on what the cost should be? I think you called it value engineering. Is that what this, the sub, the committee is suggesting? Chris?
Uh, yes, but that thirty thousand dollars isn't above and beyond what we're asking for. And Jen may have a little bit more background with the experience with the H VAC system.
Yeah, so what this does is it actually it, it's a part of that guaranteed maximum price. It, it's included, it would be included in the contract because what we need to do is the bid was based on a guaranteed maximum price, which they need to say, okay, we're not sure if we need to add structural support for the H VAC, the, the one that goes over the meeting room. So we put an allowance in there for that. We're not sure if looking up in the ceiling, there aren't some issues with combustible materials in the the plenum space. So the guaranteed maximum price is a a price that you can budget and the goal is to come in under that. So what were the bidder who did provide a proposal actually included two H V A C contractors that we had sent the proposal out to, two of them combined because based on the schedule and their different, their their labor capabilities. They felt that it, by combining their labor force and one does actually does the duct work and the other folk, and the other one would do more of the administration. It, it was a, a, a better team that could go, you know, do all the work. Also, so it was John Dyer Mechanical or Boone and Dyer Mechanical, sorry. And Robertson Morrison. And then here in Valley Electric, which they're the ones that did the lighting replacement. So they are familiar with the building. They also had some, you know, which always say budgets in there based on what they could observe. We also had, we already know we can take out the tax on all the equipment. We know it that the geo person and a subcontractor, Vance and O'Brien, both had site work concluded. So there, there's some duplications as we go through that. So what this is, is really going through the initial kind of design and value engineering phase that we would have, that we would go through. You know, if we started the project. So what this is, is saying, all right, we we think this team is well qualified and we need to replace three, three H VAC equipment, the rooftop equipment. And we have the geo option, which with the forty percent direct pay would be, you know, just around a million dollars. And we have the dual fuel furnace that it doesn't qualify for the direct pay and they would be about equivalent in their costs. And the geo is still a much better value. It has more controls, more zones and so forth. So, but we wanted to make sure that the board had a choice because there is a possibility, we have this kind of disturbing federal administration that is doing things that in, that isn't really under our control. isn't really under our control. So there is a small possibility that that forty percent could and not be accessible accessible. People are saying that you can't change the IRS rules in because we're already in that IRS eight year, but they're they're doing things that are not necessarily legal. So that's why we wanted to bring those two proposals to the board.
Jan, just for clarity, did you say, just say that the dual fuel and the geothermal pricing is about the same?
That's true. But with the geo with knowing that the geothermal would qualify for that forty percent.
Okay.
Right. Yes.
Trustee Brandon finished. Uh, trustee. Caleb, maybe for Chris also, why did it attract one response, one bidder?
Chris knew that one?
Yeah, I did speak with a couple of the the contractors who didn't bid. One of the answers was that they were booked solid throughout the year. They didn't have time. One of the other contractors had mentioned that they weren't real familiar working with geothermal and didn't feel comfortable with bidding on it. So we did have a couple of different answers of why some local contractors didn't bid.
Thank you.
All right. So Caleb, I'm gonna ask you and Jan, those are some questions. I figured software or poly entries estimate probable cost was some of the data that you were just pulling was completely erratic, I guess is a good word for it.
I think it's underpriced. I think it's the software is particularly based on a new building. And, you know, if you're going to build a large new building, this is the per unit cost. And I've been finding that it has not been applying well to retrofits of buildings that contractors coming into existing buildings know that there's a lot more costs that come up that you find in an existing building. Yeah.
I guess when I was looking over the quotation, I had looked at the project schedule. And I'd also looked at some of the intricacies with that, as well as the fact that I looked at the proposal. And it doesn't really actually have a broken apart budget, just has a GMP. I figure at some point, I don't know if it's going to be an AI form contract or something else, but I mean, I understand the number, I understand we're also talking about there's duplication. I guess does some of these documents already exist somewhere or basically because there's only been a quotation, no contract was drawn up since there's no guarantee that the project's moving forward. So why spend the effort? I don't know. Am I answering my own question?
Was your question, when would you get those?
Yeah, I guess I guess my question is specifically going back to the budget. There's discussion, I guess, from everyone involved that there's duplication from some of the contractors because obviously they're still figuring out who's going to be responsible for what overlap we have. Do we have a broken apart budget, at least from the Boone and Dar side of it? It's more than just a high level, one point eight oh four million.
I haven't seen one written out yet. I don't think, Jan, do we have, I don't think we have anything written out from Boone and Dar yet.
We we just have our notes from the meeting, which we basically, we went through the electrical, the mechanical, the ductwork. And then there was the geo, of course. And then there was Vance and O'Brien was doing the new ceiling. You know, taking things down, the demolition, that kind of stuff. So it was the, it was a very large portion, and that's where we started talking about sort of vetting that process. And the goal of the goal of this next phase would be to say there is quite a bit of work for everyone to do. And the goal would be coming back with it's called a schedule of values, which is a breakdown of all the different contractors and what it would be. And then guaranteed maximum price and enough of a sort of what I would say a schematic, more of a a design development set of drawings that basically says, this is the way we're going to lay out the ductwork. This is so the pricing can be fine tuned. And then at that time, there would be the the schedule of values, the amount, the sched, you know, the timing schedule. One of the issues is several pieces of equipment are like fifteen weeks to order. And and so what this does is it allows us to value engineer, maybe even do some more integration, but everyone felt comfortable that they could get it down to at least that one point six. And the goal would be to give us the best value product that we could for a good price and have that schedule of values and more detail. Because knowing it, it's sort of a good faith effort on the board's part to say, yes, we know we have to do this. We know there's and we want this team to do their very best work in value engineering this project.
Yeah, that makes sense. That's others level development to hundred, so like two hundred level architectural drawings. For those of in the public that don't know, I actually had it linked up, so I'm probably more familiar with this than most people are. I'm not an expert, but I just read it and I sort of know what I'm looking at. I guess my biggest question, looking at some of this other stuff, and and sort of this goes back to what you mentioned, Jan, and I'll let this be my last point, so we don't go too long. I have a concern on page two, simply at the point of engineer design does not include efforts resulting from owner directed design changes after seventy five percent plans are approved. I don't necessarily have an issue with the fact that that's there. My biggest concern is we get you guys through another couple of months or just sort of when our schedule looks like it's laid out. As you alluded to, the federal government decides we're done with this, we're not going to give you the forty percent. And then the board's left holding, unfortunately, holding the responsibility for paying those costs and or spending tens of thousands or a hundred thousand dollars on reengineering a project. Or probably more likely just ending up paying for the cost savings we don't get for direct pay because we'll have ordered equipment potentially by that point. So I I just I don't have an answer, but I appreciate all the answers to your questions. Thanks, guys.
I do want to point out that the contract has not been reviewed by the township attorneys. So this is this was in the bid, we asked for them to propose their contract. So that it it does need to get reviewed. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi Caleb. So under the the, there's two for the geothermal. And it says the proposed project budget at one million six hundred thousand. Jan and Chris. And so this is without tax. Is it before I heard something that minus the tax will be less, and that's the that's the price or the without the tax? The one million six hundred thousand?
I think that was without tax and several other sort of like we found some duplication. We were kind of pushing the contractor for, okay, well, could we change this a little bit and can we reduce the price? So sort of that's the goal to get to after people sit and down and go through with a finer pencil on, you know, where can we reduce costs? And included included removing the tax, but it was not all from removing tax.
Okay. And then the direct pay, that's the IRS. Okay. Okay. And then so the final cost, hopefully we'll have the direct pay, but nine hundred four or, yeah, that's right, nine hundred four, eight hundred, right? Okay. And then for that, that's for the geothermal, the whole complete package. And then the, what was the other one called? The dual fuel dual fuel rooftop units with retrofit retrofit zone dampers. And that one, it still has an Eagle Grant?
Yeah, I believe that the township has already been awarded the Eagle Grant.
So we can use that for geothermal or a new system? Whatever the system is. Okay. So that's good. And the final cost is nine hundred eight thousand. Okay, so then Boone and Dar. We went out for RFP, Boone and Dar was the company that said that they could do the geothermal, the rest of them backed out. Okay. And that, and they gave us a quote for both of both types. So have we gone out for bid just for the other type to find out if that could be?
I would clarify that we got a very rough guess on the second option. So they gave us a quote for that for the geothermal. And then we had a meeting where we all sat down and said, wow, this budget was high. What happened? What is the, I was, we were like, what is the possible like next option? Like, what would be the cheapest option? And I thought I thought that one was going to be a lot cheaper. And and it it may be that this one contractor's Boone and Dar's informed opinion was that will still cost nine hundred thousand dollars. So he didn't quote us that, but gave it of like, oh, yeah.
Okay, yeah, I'm just.
We haven't, we haven't gotten any official quotes on that.
Okay, yeah. And that's what I'm curious to see if there's other quotes from other contractors regarding this other type of system that may be even less. Yeah. Anyway, that's that's it for my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, for your work going back and kind of figuring out why we were off. I want to say I'm still totally comfortable with the geothermal. We've talked about that at length at this table. I think we know that it's comparable. This stuff's just really expensive. And in the future, it will be even more expensive. And I am happy to support the geothermal with or without the federal rebates. I mean, this, I think what's happening at our federal government is is we we have multiple years ahead of us and our HVAC system needs to be replaced. Climate change is not going away. It's only going to get worse. And I say perhaps something unpopular, which is that we can totally afford this. We can totally afford this. Now, we have a fund balance for this reason. If this is a priority for the community. And so certainly we want to get the direct pay and the grants and everything we can, but this goes to our budget conversation. You know, if this is a priority for us, we can afford this. We just need to be more disciplined with the rest of our general fund spending, but our fund balance can support this. If we spend one point six million dollars out of our fund balance, we would still be okay tomorrow. If we became, you know, more disciplined with our year over year. So I'm I'm very comfortable going forward with the geothermal. We're going to try to get the direct pay. We're going to advocate for every federal dollar we can. But worst case scenario, we will still be able to do the right thing here in SIO with our own public funds.
Trustee Reiser.
Nothing.
Trustee, no.
I'm supportive of this. I agree with the comments that have been made. I don't have any additional questions.
Well, let's see.
Jan, I want to thank you for your hard work on this.
Yeah. And Christopher, and all of you.
Thank you.
Jan doesn't get paid, that's why I said.
So the action we need to take tonight?
Yeah, it's this is the motion. Well, okay.
This is asking for just for the engineering value engineer.
Yes.
So Chris, if you could help us out here, is this the request to BOT number one? Item on your memo? Yes, Jan?
Well, wait a minute, we have two requests here. Yeah, there's, I think, I think it'd be number one. These are two kinds of options. And then would be option one. Then we need to have a a motion for one option over the other.
Okay.
I would suggest.
I would make a motion and I would then quickly welcome every friendly amendment there is. I would make a motion to approve a budget increase for the project, issue a letter of intent contract with this team to value engineer the project and bring back a revised GMP and engineering design for final approval, not later than the March twenty fifth board meeting for a cost not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
I would support that.
Because I would clarify that we're still going with geothermal as part of that somehow.
Thank you. Yes, so maybe we might say
For this geothermal HVAC project, something like that.
Sure. So this team proposal for geothermal?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Is that good with you, Kathleen?
Yes.
Who's the motion?
I Flynn Talked, support by Brand.
Okay. And Clerk Flynn Talk, could you repeat the motion? Yes, the amended motion, please.
To approve a budget increase for this project, issue a letter of intent to contract with this team proposal for geothermal to value engineer the project and bring back bring back a revised GMP and engineering design for final approval, not later than the March twenty fifth board meeting for a cost not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Roll call vote, please. Yable?
Yes.
Flynn Talked, yes. Brand?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Harry?
No.
Motion passes six to one. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to we oh, L one, new business. On faster than. Um, okay, so Chief Hood, I believe he's on.
I don't know that he is, but he's not needed. I'm happy to write over, view, anybody needs explanation.
I'm I'm
I don't know if we do.
It's up to my manager. I'm
Agreed.
going to move, I would move to authorize.
But wait a minute, I think he's asking, oh, so does he know?
Volunteers. So the, so the committee, this is similar. Last time around, the board appointed Joyce Parker and me. I've been on the fire services guidance committee. We helped to let the architect the chief is suggesting, you know, one or more of us join him and Alex Bay from OHM to interview architect and construction manager candidates. This work would take place between March third and March eleven. The bids are coming in Wednesday and the day I'll have them. So tomorrow.
Are you volunteering?
I'm 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 happy to do it, but I want to give a chance for somebody else to step in. This certainly isn't my area.
I'm happy to do it as well. The only thing I would say is if I, the the one thing that could happen, it did happen last time I was on the board and I did not interfere. But if the person that built my building, they did bid on architecture services, then I would refuse myself at that point.
Okay.
That that would be the only exception.
Sure. So could we maybe appoint somebody and then a backup?
Yeah, or an alternate. I'd be happy to do it unless somebody else prefers to.
No, I would recommend Ryan unless we need a backup.
Yeah. Yeah, I think you'd do a great job, Ryan.
Then if you wanted to do backup.
I'll be back up.
Okay, okay.
Because then I'd do a good job.
Yeah.
Ready for motion? I'll wait.
Yes. Motion.
So we could say, if we could, the motto motion would be to authorize the fire chief, Alex Bay from OHM, treasurer, Yable, parentheses, and Clerk Flynn Talked as backup to interview architect and construction manager candidates and to make a hiring recommendation to the board.
Would we accept a friendly amendment after for Fire Station Two after?
Right.
Good point.
And would you accept adding Andrew Hood's name after the word fire chief?
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you, John. Your station two. We have a motion. Who is that? Was that? I think, I'm sorry.
I guess. Me, I guess.
And John made a front amendment. And then you made it, okay.
Yeah. I think it was Jessica's motion. I would support it if we don't have a second already. And then there was a couple of friendly amendments that had Andrew's name and Fire Station Two and I think she captured.
Oh, got it. Great.
Flynn Talked and Reiser.
And then we don't need a roll call. This can be voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. None. Motion passes.
Great.
Okay. Yep, L three. Authorization of cost of living adjustment, COLA, for eligible employees effective April first, twenty twenty five. Laura?
Thanks for our HR manager.
Questions, I'm here to answer them.
Can we start with, do we?
Can we, um, start with, do we need a motion? Cause I'm ready to make the model motion.
Okay.
Um, anything other than the model motion to authorize effective April one, twenty twenty-five, a cost of living allowance increase of three dot one percent in wages only. And not to on-call or other incentive pay to all regular full-time employees and all temporary employees with regularly scheduled shifts, except for those employees entitled to annual increases under a collective bargaining agreement. Once employees complete their six-month employment period, COLA increase will be applied. This increase shall not be awarded to elected officials.
Or? Motion by Monk, support by Yable?
I have a proposed amendment to the motion. Um, I wanna, I wanna thank Aurora Rebecca for your work on this. A comment, we have once employees complete their six-month employment period, the COLA increase will be applied. For clarity, um, once employees are off probation and have completed their six-month employment, I would also be open to twelve months of employment. Um, we haven't had, I think twelve months would be fair. Um, but, but I'm happy to go with the recommendation of six months, but I definitely think off probation, um, should be in there.
I support and approved by the board of trustees.
Yes. Oh, yes.
They're approved. So off probation and approved are the board of trustees.
That's right. So, and, and Aurora, isn't it our policy that people aren't off probation unless we approved it? Okay, perfect.
I would support the twelve-month language. And the rationale is that anytime I've been employed, I certainly did not expect to raise any less than one year, and sometimes feel lucky if you got it in a year. Um, I think that's not, that's a decent standard to be applied.
Yeah, and I think any, anywhere we set it, like, there will be an irregularity. So if it's six months or twelve months, then it's going to be a few months later that they would get a second COLA. If so.
Okay, so, um, that's confusing. If I, then the final sentence, then, if I understand, would be once employees complete their nine month, or excuse me, their twelve-month employment and probation.
And are off probation.
And are off probation, the COLA increase will be applied.
I would support that.
And will it be approved, off probation and approved by the board of trustees?
Are off probation and approved by the board of trustees, yes. Makes sense.
So if someone started and they only had like five months or, you know, whatever, then they have to, would they get it a year into their service or no?
A year into their service, so it would be, it would be three point one on their anniversary.
Okay, so they wouldn't have to wait eighteen months or something like that?
So we're gonna have different employees receiving COLA at different times of the year.
Or newer employees. Newer employees would receive it.
I, I don't think she means at different times of the year. I think. But then.
At their service anniversary date.
Just after their service.
Yeah, once they get their long job, just that they get their long job.
Okay, and then they would go on the same cycle as everybody else?
Yes, okay.
I was gonna say, employee hired in December, for example, twenty twenty-four would receive it, designed for twelve months, December of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so that means that someone could get it, the, after a year of service, then another one after less than a year of service.
Exactly.
But, but they've been here for years, so the.
Oh, exactly, yeah.
The, the goal would probably be, once we've set this, to be consistent going forward, everything.
Okay, I think that makes sense.
Okay, um, could we read that again? The, the mo, the amended motion, please?
Sure, sure. So it's a motion by Monk, support by Yable to authorize effective April one, twenty twenty-five, a cost of living allowance of increase of three point one percent in wages only, and not to on-call or other incentive pay to all regular full-time employees and all temporary employees with regularly scheduled shifts, except for those employees entitled to annual increases under a collective bargaining agreement. Once employees complete their twelve-month employment period and are off probation and approved by the board, a COLA increase will be applied. This increase shall not be awarded to elected officials.
Okay. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Yable?
Yes.
Flynn Talk?
Yes.
Brand?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion adopted, seven zero.
Sorry.
Thank you, Aurora, so much.
Yes, Aurora.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, on to agenda L four. Um, this is the. Do this, um, possible action. Do I need to say all those?
Number numbers.
Yeah, M H L C, Many Hands Life Sharing Community Preliminary Union. A fifteen-minute presentation, please.
Yes, we have a very short one. Um, you can see the process of pulling that up. But I can just kind of start by saying, I am so excited to be here tonight. Uh, we have raised the funds to purchase the property, and after, um, we buy the property, we'll have over a million dollars in our account to start moving towards construction. Uh, it's a really exciting time, and one of the key things that I like the most is the funds are from people who live just a few miles. Uh, and I'm talking the small donors and the large donors. So it really fills community support it. I'll go back to say. My name is Carrie Kafapian. I'm the founder and executive director of Many Hands Life Sharing Community. And, uh, but really, I, I'm first and foremost a mother. Uh, my son Kevin, he was eight years old when I realized he was gonna need around-the-clock care for the rest of his life. Next, in two weeks, he turns twenty-eight, and working on this for twenty years. And during that time, I've had an opportunity to build a lot of friendships, get to know a lot of other families who are in a similar situation. And this really, um, is important for all of us. Um, and so.
Here, excuse me, I'm sorry, I should have done this before. Could you introduce your, um, team, please?
Well, sure, it's really exciting. Um, I. I know it's done, but you've met him before, uh, from Midwestern, Tom. Gordon.
Covert Harry.
And, uh, helping us with all this, and, uh, you received a letter before, and some of you, I think, know, um, Jerry? You wanna introduce yourself?
Gerald Fisher, attorney. Uh, and I'm basically a local government, uh, attorney. In fact, I performed local government services for SIO Township, uh, twenty-five years ago, I think.
I think you know my dad.
Peter.
Peter.
Peter, oh, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, great guy.
Yeah, and I thought it'd be helpful in case legal-type questions come up, so, uh, but yeah, it really. Um, the presentation is gonna be short. I just think it's very important, though, that we keep in the forefront of our minds what Many Hands Life Sharing is. And it, our mission is to provide a safe, meaningful, connected life, filled with enriching activities, learning opportunities for adults with intellectual and developmental disabilities. All of this within a cooperative residential setting that prepares the next generation of service professionals. Um, one of the things a lot of people don't realize is there is more than seven thousand people with just intellectual and developmental disabilities, including severe autism, living in Washtenaw County right now. I mean, it's, it's a significant number. And over a thousand of those are adults who need twenty-four-hour care like my son. And it's left to the families mostly, unless you're in a rare situation where you're able to find staffing, and that is a continuous issue. Um, and the lack of residential options is because, you know, low wages for caregivers providers has been an ongoing issue. It's really created quite a shortage crisis. Um, and then a lot of these parents, I mean, they're aging. And I, I know several that are in their seventies, eighties, and they have the fifty-five, their fifty-five-year-old son at home. That's a very scary situation. But then also look at it from the adult child's point of view. They've never had a chance to grow to their full potential. Uh, their life has been fairly isolated in their parents' home. That's where the life-sharing model comes in. It really makes a difference. With the family-style homes, it really, everything is designed to foster community, um, help with increased safety, and lead to more independence. This life-sharing model has been around for over sixty-five years. It's modeled after Camp Hill, which is in New York, Pennsylvania, it started, but it's spread throughout the country. But, uh, SIO Township would be the first life-sharing model in our area in Michigan. Um, the, the other thing to keep in mind is everyone yearns to belong and to be part of a community. And the many social opportunities that are built into the Many Hands model really gives an opportunity to foster that, and those relationships and that activity, all while providing a safe environment and a situation where people can even become more independent than they would out in the larger world. And I see that where someone is able to, at a Camp Hill, just leave their home, walk independently down the street because it's within an enclosed campus, so they don't have to worry about traffic, and go to a bakery where they like to bake bread, something like that. Um, right now, we have, the numbers changed already, thirty-three families have already signed statements of interest. And as I was talking before about the funding coming from local, it's really a local issue they're solving, cause a third of those families, twelve of them, live within three miles of our property. That close, right here in town. Um, all of these families, we're all facing this very scary question. As a mom, I feel like I can't die, cause who will take care of my child? And that's what keeps us up at night. And so that was the question twenty-some years ago. I knew someday, I was unfortunate, I was trying to answer. Uh, here's the project vision and some of the elements. Uh, one of the things that I do wanna talk about right here, I think this is a good place to talk about it, is everything that's being created, be it the farm, be it the activity center, the craft house, even the cafe, which isn't a business, it's more of a meeting place, but, you know, we have coffee, cause who doesn't like coffee, and some baked goods. But it's so that we can increase socialization and meeting. But these activities, including the farming itself, are all there directly for the benefit of the disabled residents. And the thought is that that comes under, um, you know, a, a residential and recreation PUD, same as you would if you had a golf course and a clubhouse. We're thinking that's very much the same kind of use, because it is direct. But then, because these are directly for residents with a disability, we went ahead and took it a step, um, further, uh, you know, with, uh, Jerry's help, that we have formally asked that the board, if they do have issues about the PUD, is this residential, recreation, or not, that you go ahead and give us what's called reasonable accommodations under the Federal Fair Housing Act for people with disabilities. And this is exactly what that act was written to, is to give people in your situation a little bit of wiggle room, that to recognize, okay, we don't wanna say yes to everybody and open a floodgate of issues, but we are a, um, human health PUD. And if you are quoting the Federal Fair Housing Act, that is a very direct connection, and to show that those uses are appropriate, um, if that becomes an ongoing issue. Um, one, what we have going on here is eight family-style homes, uh, housing for a hundred people. Again, this is low-income housing. It's mostly staff housing. A, um, a third of the people living there have a disability, um, and they're, you know, they're extreme low income, thousand dollars a month. But the staff is paid a rate usually around fifteen to twenty dollars an hour, and in Dexter, that pay rate, you qualify for low-income housing. But that's in for a minute. And this area is so desperate for more worker housing. Uh, the ongoing operational expenses, uh, where this world right now, unfortunately, nothing is guaranteed. But it isn't through a grant or any specialized program like that. It's, um, it's been ongoing for many years, um, embedded into the, um, waiver program, which is administered through community mental health. And, um, these families currently are receiving, if you have an adult who's living on their own, you receive over two hundred thousand dollars a month in Washtenaw County. For, or not a month, a year, two hundred thousand a year, for the care of that adult. That's not for food, that's not for the rent, just for the care. And so when we talk about the funding streams, it's already there, it's already up and going. It's just someone's moving from their parents' home or an apartment to Many Hands, and that money does follow them. And that's really important, cause we don't wanna build something and then have it close in five years. Uh, the, the staff housing, we were talking about already how important that is, but we're looking at this as more than, it's an opportunity to train the next generation of care providers. Um, we expect sixty percent of the workers to be under the age of thirty. Often, it will be people, recent college grads. It could be, we've already talked with the, what, um, University of Michigan and social workers doing their internships here, things like that. Uh, but what's really exciting is this is, we're very open. We're sharing our floor plans, we're sharing our business uh, model, we're sharing our financials with others, cause we wanna see it duplicated up in Lansing, in Grand Rapids, and Oakland County. Um, here, gives you kind of a picture of just some of the different activities. Um, you'll notice that a lot of them are outdoors, um, and being outside and connected to nature is very important. Uh, and now to some of the issues that came up during the, um, planning commission. And what we've done is some updates to the overall site plan, so that now we're just asking for just two, what I would consider the smaller deviations. The first one is we have a building that is just over fifty-five feet from exist, um, for where we wanna have the drainage field. Remember, this is just a septic field. Now, for the county, the county says you have to be over ten feet. We're fifty-five feet, but because we are a community wastewater system, that says two hundred feet. So we're asking for a deviation from that two hundred feet down to fifty-five for our own building. By the way, that building is on a slab. It doesn't have a basement. The other deviation we're asking for is because this is just a field, it's not, again, what the, um, what would the code was written for. It's, and we don't have anything like an evaporation pod or any equipment above ground. Everything's, um, below ground. So we don't see any purpose for fencing in basically what is a field. So we're asking for a deviation and not to have to do the fencing. And that's the only two deviations we're asking for. Um, I had gotten some questions about the overall, where we're located on a map in relation to other stuff. I did share this map, um, previously, um, with some members, and I wanted to put it up here. Uh, and really just focus in, what we're talking about tonight is the yellow area. Um, Many Hands, we're buyers. We're buying the land that's the only part of the, um, project we'll have control over.
Not yellow land, what the purchase agreement covers?
Yes. And I want to just be clear, just so there is no misunderstanding, there's two acres at the very bottom, lower left-hand corner, and we're purchasing that from the Lotus Landscaping and. And we're doing that so that, we were looking for sand down in that southern field, and we were able to get it by Travon, who's spoken on our behalf here before, as selling us two acres to help facilitate that. So I just wanted to be sure you knew that there was a secondary seller in the process, but that's the smaller of the piece. And it would all be put into one parcel. Now, this question, I can come back and go into a little more detail. The state of Michigan does not give anything in writing, pre-approving you or saying, you know, that you'll have to have a license or you won't. They, their policy, they don't put it in writing. They want to see it up and running. Then they make a judgment on it. So I can't get anything from the state of Michigan to give you. They have policy, they just don't do that. But what they do say is we have very clear, you know, rules when you have to be licensed, and there's a very clear exception to that rule. And that exception is when you're looking more at the home and community-based model, and that's what we are. Again, think of His Eyes on the Sparrow, which is in Dexter. They're not licensed. You know, this is, we have a home where four residents are living. And those four residents are, we use the word monitored through community mental health. But I mean, we're talking time sheets are reviewed to see what is occurring. And those time sheets are for pretty much every hour of the day. Also, they're assigned, each individual's assigned their own case manager or social worker who comes on-site and visits at least once a month. It's, we're under a microscope. It's very intense oversight, more so than you would even get with a licensing.
Can I have, tell me more slides you have?
Just a few more. So I just knew that was a big issue, and I wanted to be sure to address that clearly.
And I will have questions about that later.
Okay.
Let me ask questions.
All right, and then the environment and sustainability. I'm in environments in my heart. You know, we've already planted eighty acres of cover crop to protect the topsoil. We don't want it washing down into Mill Creek. We've put in a seven-acre prairie preserve. And that, we worked with Fessence Forever and the Washtenaw County Conservation District, which is amazing, they're great. And we included flower seeds, so it's a monarch butterfly. That, we have a pathway already going past it so that it's accessible to the wider community to enjoy. Everything we're doing, organic vegetables, regenerative farming, we're trying to pull the CO2 out of the environment and put it in the ground in soil where it belongs. Of course, all the lighting we're doing, we love stars. So we're doing, it's called dark sky lighting. So we're putting lighting on the pathways, not up into the air. Sustainability, which is very important. I'm glad to hear you guys are supporting the geothermal. We're looking at that. Our buildings are intended to be net-zero ready. We're not doing any fossil fuels, there's no gas on the property. Most of it, we're looking at solar panels for the energy and enough solar panels to support ourselves and maybe actually have some excess available to others. We're using sustainable building materials, like metal roofing, which could last hundreds some years, you know, versus asphalt that you have to replace. And then the community benefits. I recognize this is a PUD, part of a PUD is there should be community benefits. And I think we're providing housing for a very important segment of our society that really needs it. And it's going to be a fun place where people can meet and make friends for the wider community. There's opportunities for volunteerism. We're already talking with Dexter Schools and ways that they can come and be involved. We have the trails. We have that one that goes all the way around, it's a two-mile trail, and we're going to have parking in a trailhead. And we're also eventually going to have the public restrooms available at that trailhead, which is really nice to have. We have a fire hydrant right on Baker Road for the fire department to be able to use. We are preserving, actually, this number shifted a little, ninety percent of the property is going to stay natural or agricultural. We've clustered the housing. I mean, that's so important. It's really going to stay that rural feeling. We aren't bulldozing things level. It's keeping the original drainage patterns, the natural tree lines. And so tonight, we're sharing the project officially with the board. We're here to answer questions. So we got an assortment of people who can answer questions here. We want to gain your input on it. But really, everybody who's here who supports Many Hands, you've met many parents from previous meetings who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight. You've seen the petitions, you've seen the letters of support, the people who are online right now. All of us are very much respectfully asking that you do tonight, go ahead and vote yes to approve the preliminary PUD for Many Hands because it will become a part of the whole community, and it'll be a part of the whole community where everybody belongs. Thank you.
One thing I wanted to raise, thank you, Julian.
I mean.
Oh, sorry.
Laura.
Oh, yeah, I did ask Laura and Matt and Stacy to join.
That's right.
Thank you. I did just want to note, as is our practice rule, ten-point-one obligation to vote. That is the area, and typically we do it before discussion too. So I'm bringing this up. Prior to a vote, any member who has a real or perceived conflict of interest on the question before the board shall state what the conflict is and that they request permission to abstain from the vote. I want to take this opportunity, and it's been months, but I knew one day this day would come, to, to just, you know.
We're still on Zoom, Zoom was still open, it just wasn't on your computer.
Oh, great, thank God.
Probably because you were still presented, that's probably why it didn't end.
Yeah, but there was a, there was a period of blackout, so I didn't hear all of the last conversation. So I'm just going to go through my planning report, and you can tell me if I'm way off base, how's that? So the planning commission did hear, hear this project a couple of times, and they did recommend denial based on three items. Since the planning commission meeting, the applicant did submit a revised plan that they've presented before you this evening that demonstrated that they are only requesting two deviations internal to the community wastewater system related to a setback of their own building, and then requesting that a fence not be required along the, around the drain field. In our review, we found that they, the PUD itself has presented a number of community benefits that Kiri really briefly went over. A couple of the highlights are the significant open space that will be preserved and conserved as part of this project, the development of the trailhead, and allowance of the public to use the trails that will be throughout this project and connecting potentially to other township locations. And then a fire hydrant is being installed along Baker Road that's much needed for the fire department. That isn't just for use of this project, but for the surrounding area as well. In the packet, you have our, our report and a supplemental memo that talks about how, based on our review of the revisions presented, we believe that the qualifications and criteria of the PUD have been met. And so that includes the community benefits that have been outlined and requested and that the deviations have been reduced to the minimum internal components of the development this evening. In our October fifteenth review, we noted a number of issues that could be addressed as part of the final site plan as they're more technical in nature and require additional detailed engineering prior to consideration. So I'm happy to answer any planning questions you have. I'm sure you probably also have some technical questions that Sally's here that she can help with.
So are we, are we going to start asking questions?
Yeah.
You're, okay.
I have a question, a procedural question. On other topics, we've made the model motion, and then we discuss and deliberate.
Not always.
Okay.
We don't always do that.
Yeah, we don't always.
Okay.
And it's not required by our rules, it's whatever the preference.
That's cool. I was confused earlier.
Because these model motions are, are very rough drafts, and I think we're going to end up needing to modify the model motion significantly. Right? And I think Mariah will be helping us on that.
All right.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm going to start at the beginning, couple base. If you could show us on a map, where are the four wells going to be? And where are the pump stations going to be? Because I couldn't find it on the map that you had submitted.
Luke, do you want me to show you on the plans or graphically on the rendering?
Can you show us with the map up on the screen and show us?
Sharing my screen, but I'll describe it to you. So there is an access road, that's the southern access road that goes back to the circle where the residential lots are. That way between the entrance and that circle where the residential units are, there would be a couple of wells that would be advanced and then distribute, distribute water to the, the project there.
Cameling. Your back, I don't know.
On the map.
So this area here. So there's two points. This area, that is referenced on our utility plan, there were the two wells and the hydrant would be available. And then on this pro, on this northern access road, the wells would be sitting somewhere in this area distributing water to them.
And this one well, pumping well, one a backup well, or are they all four active wells?
Typically, it would be just a single well working with the backup well as a redundancy. Yep. So two, two working supplying the demand generally, and then two backup.
And how many trees would need to be cut down on the property?
Regulated trees or? I couldn't tell you, but I'd have to look at the tree list. It was in, in the site plan set. I didn't total the number of trees totaled. We made a, so we've identified landmark trees. We've made a conscious effort to try to keep and preserve the existing fence row trees in there. Not all of those trees in the fence row meet requirements to being landmarked. Is some free removal that happens? And if you were to look at the tree list, it would identify the trees that were required to be mapped. If they're being removed, they are denoted as being removed.
Could you give us that information and later more of a tally, like landmark trees and all trees?
And I've walked the property many times. It really, where the most trees are going are at the entrances, and that's just for sightlines. Once you get into the property proper, we pretty much have pathways and roads going around trees whenever possible.
And with the project, would you be doing the excavation initially? Like, I know you're doing the project in phases, but would you have to excavate the whole lot, or are you going to excavate in phases?
So the construction is designed to be done in phases too. You think of like that southern entrance, that roadway and that driveway would be the main work that would be done. The northern area would not come until we get a final PUD for that separate construction phase.
So you're, you're going to be requesting multiple PUDs?
Multiple final PUDs and permit building, correct me if I'm wrong. But yeah, we checked with Laura and Doug way back before to make sure this was an option because we're going to just focus on the southern driveway and the road for that. And then when we come back for the next construction phase, we will have to get another final PUD for that piece. And then when we're doing the northern driveway, again, that would be a separate final PUD for that.
So three separate PUDs?
And that's what we're looking at for each of it. Because we are doing the construction in phases. And that's what we're looking at for each of it, because we are doing the construction in phases.
Yeah.
No, I don't use that.
Terminal.
Yeah, Tom.
So, we are requesting preliminary P U D, which will cover all phases, preliminary.
Right.
Okay.
Then what will happen, if, if this is, uh, voted and the agreements are made, we will come forward with additional study and design, um, that will go through multiple different county agencies and the township for each phase as they are brought forward. Phase one for the site is concentrated on the southern access drive. It would be the access drive, the stormwater management, a small portion of the drain field uh, for the wastewater, and wells for water supply, and two of the residential buildings. So, phase one is some stormwater, the studio, and two of the residential buildings on that circle. And then, that's what we would bring forward as the final site plan.
Okay. Can I ask a procedural, so is, when is the? If that, if this is preliminary P U D, and then this is in three parts, then it's final P U D, that's gotta be in one part, right?
I was unclear this was gonna be in three parts, so I
Okay.
I'll be asking Laura i- in a minute for clarification on that.
All right.
Well, I'm thinking Laura would be the best person to explain, because what we're talking about is the difference between approving the, approving the P U D itself and doing detailed engineering.
Right.
But Laura, can you give us a better idea of how that works with the phasing?
Sure, so we've done, we've done P U Ds in the same manner before, I believe Trailwoods was done this way. Um, but you're, you're approving a preliminary P U D that is the entire project, like Tom said. You're, um, approving the use, you're approving the general layout, um, how the utilities will work, um, et cetera. And then they're gonna tell us, um, at final, they're gonna have a final for each, it's basically a final site plan for each phase, is how you would look at it. So they can, they could phase it, um, in three phases, and they may determine, um, after the first phase is built, that they want to do the second and third phases together. Um, they're, they're really, you know, there, there, there is a way to phase it out, um, through final, but the preliminary is where we're agreeing to the concept, the use, um, and the general layout. Does that make sense?
It, of course it makes sense, but I'm, I didn't hear about, oh, this phasing before. I mean, it's mentioned in the narrative report, but I didn't realize, um, it, it was gonna be kind of a sequential potential approval of the final site plans.
So we had talked about it previously, um, we've been so focused on the preliminary that maybe it did, it, you know, I didn't focus on that in my report, but this was, this was a potential all along. And like I said, this is something we've done in the past, this isn't the first project that we phased, um, through final P U D approval.
And I know we had issues with Trailwoods because of some of this.
Well, Trailwoods is a little different because that's a single-family residential product, and so you're dealing with multiple property owners, um, as the project, um, you know, moves forward. This is a single owner, um, so I think this is a little, this is a little bit different than, than Trailwoods.
Okay, so would the excavation, that was my question, for the entire site be done initially?
No, just the first phase that is highlighted, that southern entrance up to two homes.
All right, so then, going on to licensure and funding sources, let me ask you, you had mentioned early on that Medicaid would potentially be a funding source.
Yes, so, uh, Kristen Kill, what she was describing earlier, and what I can use my own son as an example, is, um, he is on what is called a HAB waiver, and that waiver comes directly through the federal government. It's different than a lot of other services that are provided through community mental health. It's a little, it's very similar to social security, the money follows the person. And what it does is it recognizes someone on a HAB waiver needs twenty-four hour care, the highest level of care. And so it provides for the, um, cost of staffing, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And that's where that number, if you multiply it out, is, oh, just over two hundred thousand right now. Um, and those funds, whether the individual's living in their own home, um, or they're renting an apartment or whatever, it follows them. And most, uh, um, everybody who so far has been doing the list, they're on the HAB waiver, and they're just looking to then move that HAB waiver onto many hands.
And this will come into discussion later, but, um, some of us might have concerns about potential upheaval in Medicaid, given, um, the chaos that's going on in our federal government right now. So in terms of that being, uh, dedicated funding source that you can count on.
It, it would, it would be the same as what you would run out in Silver Maples or Brio United Methodist Retirement Community. If they start cutting those seniors, um, Medicare and social security check, it's gonna be a disaster. I cannot guarantee that maybe. What I can say is the funding we have is in existence, has been around. It's one of the more secure, it's not a grant or something, it's a fairly secure funding source. Um, and a- as I said, it, it's, that what ifs, it, it's, it's hard. It would be the same as, like I said, with Silver Maples or that.
Um, and will you be a tax-exempt organization?
Yes, we are a five-one, um, five oh one C three currently.
Then let me just ask you about licensure, I know we kind of got on back and forth with that. I spoke to two people in Lansing and Laura. Um. One person was a supervisor, and her comment, I couldn't give her enough information for her to make any kind of a definitive statement, but she said to me that typically, in evaluating whether something, a program needed licensure, their office would evaluate program description, do caretakers provide protection? And is there twenty-four seven supervision? Um. And then she went on to say that if it's a community mental health agency, that that agency can provide oversight, it depends on the county, it depends on what is in place, and I did. She also said that township zoning approval of this facility would not determine state licensure requirements at all. So the zoning or whatever decisions we make with regarding the P U D, it's gonna be irrelevant to their eventual licensure decisions. You know, at one point early on, when we were first hearing about this project, you had said it wasn't going to be licensed.
Correct, and it won't be licensed, uh, just like, like I said, his eyes on the sparrow isn't licensed.
Um. So, one of the facilities, which one was it? The facility in St. Louis Center is licensed.
Yes.
And you had said also early on, this was gonna be similar to the St. Louis Center.
We're serving this, um, same population. We very intentionally are not similar in a lot of ways. They don't do life sharing, uh, they don't limit four people per home, um. I love what they do, they're amazing, I support them, but they are out in the middle of nowhere. And it was important to us to be in a busy road, so there's a lot of differences. The one thing we do have in common besides admiring each other is we do service the same population, but that's where it stops.
Okay, I mean, I have a good idea of what you're saying so far, I may ask one question. And I, I mean, I support what you're doing, this is a great idea. I, I just did have concerns when you said that this would not be licensed. Uh, I'm kind of, I'm stuck there still, I want to know more. And I might want you to reach out to this woman in Lansing and talk to her, and get more specific information, because I think, I mean, how do you know right now that the facility will not need to be licensed?
Because when I talked to Lansing, you know, and I've been talking, um, actually, it's the Department of Health and Human Services for six years now. So we've been talking to them before we even were designing buildings. And they said very clearly, if you have four individuals and you're in the home and community-based services, which we are, and that is recognizing, it's, it's a home. It's just like your neighbor next door or something like that. Those aren't supposed to be licensed, the whole idea is for it to be more just a home. And so that, we created everything based on that model, um, and St. Louis Center, you know, they have six to eight people in a house, and that's one of the reasons we're required to be like, there's a lot of differences there. And so what I've also asked them then is, can you give us things in writing, you know, and they're like, we have a policy, they have a very strict policy, they don't, because they want to see you up and running, they want to see, okay, is all the residents actually getting services through the HAB waiver and things like that? And so that's why they don't do any pre-written approval or denials.
I know in their criteria that's listed in their statute, state statute, um, a reliable funding source is one thing they evaluate for licensure.
Yeah, and, and because we are through home and community-based service, and that's where our funding's coming through, the HAB waiver, they consider that reliable, and, and that's not part of the discussion. It's really what, what they're recognizing is that when you have people on the HAB waiver, you have such intense interaction oversight with, um, the community mental health system that you don't need to be licensed, there's people constantly in the home checking up, making sure, looking to see what they do during the day, it's, and as I said, it's, it's designed for, to be a home, not an institution.
Who here in Washington County have you had contact with, um, in community mental health?
Um, well, we have shared our plans with Trish Cordez, and several of the county commissioners are also aware of it. Um, and the last conversation we had with the individual who's in charge, um, of agencies and things like that under Trish, she said, you're too new, come back in a year or two, you know, a- a- again, there's nothing really for them to work with until we have things farther along. But they're very much aware of what we're doing and, um, and the models we're following.
When I called, I didn't talk to Trish, but I talked to someone else, they didn't know anything about it. Washington County, but yeah.
Yeah, yeah. They, they've been sent business plans and shared, and we tried to set up a meeting, but they're like, give us a call, I think they said, when you're ready to start building the houses, is about when they want us to call them.
And if, if you were to get approval with conditions, um, when would you be prepared to actually start the construction?
Um, our goal is to start the construction in about two to three months. Um, it depends on a little, on financing, where, where things are going really well in that area. Um, and the, um, and we have to finish up, um, some other paperwork with the sale and land division, all that. Um, but yeah, uh, uh, we, and, and the other big piece is we still need to go through the whole final P U D, which will require a lot more engineering, and we're, we're working on it, but that's gonna take some time. And so once we get through all of that, then we would like to break ground as soon as possible.
And when you say break, uh, ground, do you mean actual construction of buildings?
Um, we need to put in the infrastructure, so the entranceway, um, and the wastewater fields, and the stormwater fields, and the road.
The universities.
So, yeah, 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 so we have a lot of work before we are, um, getting to the buildings, that'll be the fun part.
Okay, thank you.
And, and from my understanding is, this is just the preliminary P U D saying, yes, you qualify for a P U D, and between here and actually breaking ground, there's a lot of work and a lot of analyzing and people looking and approving or not approving what we're planning.
Yes, yes. I mean, this is such an unusual and novel P U D proposal that we have to ask questions. We, I mean, because there are pieces here that we don't normally see in a P U D proposal. Thank you. Does he grant?
I don't have my hand.
Well, no, we're going around.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, I wasn't ready for that. Um. I'm on the planning commission, and one, one of, what the planning commission found was, um, it was turned down because of the deviations. And so I don't understand the need for the deviations, I guess I'll say, you have ninety acres, why do these units need to be so close? Why can't you just change your, uh, design and move those buildings away from the field?
Um, the one that's fifty-five feet from, um, because we are backing up to some wetlands, and we want to preserve those wetlands, and we are trying to do cluster housing, and it would be kind of silly to ta, we have three together that are clustered, and they're up against the wetlands, and what we, I mean, we could take one of those, and then it would be kind of in a field all by itself and need roadway and access and, but it's because to the east we have wetlands, and that's, that's the, am I missing?
I, I think the other thing we were looking at with the layout too, was the proximity ultimately to the community center. So those three buildings that you're talking about, that we are, uh, with one of them, again, no basement, is fifty-five feet from where we want to have the drain field and the expansion drain field area. Um, they are the most proximate to the community center. Um, so that's important to have that, you know, some of the units are further away, these units are closer, they're constrained by the, the wetland area, they're, um, constrained by where we have good soils and such, so that's, you know, where we landed on. Um, we felt like, you know, if this was a typical residential development, we are far in excess of the ten feet required by the county from a drain field to a house, and that's considering a house with a basement. Um, this isn't a house with a basement, it's a house that would be built on a slab. So, um, we've tried to give it as much room that we can in the fifty-five feet. If the opportunity comes with the final site plan and the final calculations, that we can create more space, we would certainly do that.
Would you be willing to decrease that one unit then?
In size?
No, in existence, the whole unit.
Well, I think before we get to that, it might be worth talking about whether or not the, uh, regulation serves the appropriate function in this particular case. The, the regulation, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, the regulation of two hundred feet, uh, a- and you can tell that, I mean, if the county says ten feet, and your regulation is saying two hundred feet, there's a disconnect somehow.
Well, that's a Scioto Township, Community Wastewater System Regulation.
Exactly, and, but it was not designed for this type of septic field.
But our engineer determined, and the county determined, that this was essentially a system that would require to be under our community wastewater system because of the volume of effluent that is going to, that's projected to be discharged. But just talked to the county today about this very issue.
If I might. Um. We don't, we aren't a wastewater treatment facility by the county standard. We are by the township standard, we are a drain field. We are by the township standard. We are a drain field to the county standard. But because of the definition in the township standard that says multiple buildings connected to the system. We fall into the same category as we would with a wastewater treatment plant or a drain field. So we are applying those standards to a drain field, which by the county. Definition is different than a wastewater treatment plant or a community septic field. So we are working to have our drain fields fit. Because we have multiple buildings using the drain field. Like way the township definition of community wastewater treatment plant is written. So we've increased with this revision, the distance between the drain fields and our property lines to two hundred feet. The only issue is, while the two deviations have to do with the proximity to that one building. And not putting a fence around um, a system that's underground. And will look like a field.
Go on, that's.
Okay, yes, it was trustee Brands.
I know, I appreciate her help.
Well, yes, but the rules of order say nobody's to talk after, so.
So, um, we have an ordinance and. There are reasons why we have to stick to our ordinance. It's not because of your project. It's future projects coming that for us to give a deviation. Um, opens a door that we're not necessarily ready to open.
Can I respond to that? I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you in the middle. If you're in the middle, then I, I'll wait.
What, what I'm saying is that we have ordinance and standards for reasons. Which are more than yours. So that's how we have to evaluate this. We have turned, in my understanding, we've, we turned down another project. For this exact reason.
And, and I sit on our Z B A, at the Z B A, we have turned, we had denied variance requests. For fifteen feet on the solar array. Or a yard for the homeowner couldn't put it in anywhere else in her yard. Because of the septic drain field and, you know, we. I didn't agree with that decision, but I would have known on that one, but um, I, you know. At the Z B A level, we have stuck to the variances, the standards. Unless there are exceptional circumstances. And those exceptional circumstances do have to be documented. I don't see exceptional circumstances here, but we could, we can talk about it later.
Can I speak to it?
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, what, what we have here i- is that this deviation wouldn't be granted under the ordinance, basically. Technically, it wouldn't be granted under the ordinance, even though you have to call it a deviation under the ordinance. It's really something that you'd grant under the Federal Fair Housing Act. Is that you take all of the zoning structure that exists. And all of a sudden, in nineteen eighty-eight, Federal Fair Housing came in. And plunked down onto the state regulations uh, scheme. Obligations that must be adhered to. And what.
I'm, I'm gonna, please, I'm gonna stop right there because. What I see is a design consideration. You have a building that has two wings and that seems to be what the design that you would like. Why couldn't you just change the design of these in the north quadrant? To eliminate the deviation, the same as I said, why couldn't you move this to the east? So it's really looks like a design consideration that you could change the design potentially. And you would be within the ordinance. And that, that seems reasonable to me.
I'm gonna leave that to Tom on changing the design. And I think he, he addressed it to some degree already that.
No, it, it's, it's because you have this design in phase one, in phase two. This exact design is in the spot in the northwest quadrant. That exact same design that causes the encroachment. So you could change that design and get the same effect of what I believe, what you're trying to accomplish. It wouldn't, they wouldn't look the same? Do they have to look the same? Not necessarily, because you have this sort of cross design and these two wings are encroaching.
I think it's a good question.
Yes, there's eighty-seven acres. Yes, we could move the house to different. Well, I mean, we could make, we could expand the circle where the houses are bigger to add more room, to add a house down there. We could push things around uh, on the cul-de-sac, but that really gets away from. Um, the goal to have some of those units and, and I'm not an architect, so I can't say if we could change the building design to, to do that. But um, yes, I could see where there would be the opportunity to change the design to do that. Um, with what's being proposed, it was trying to be very thoughtful about proximity to the clubhouse and those other things. I think the township has a new ordinance that allows for us to ask for those deviations. Um, these projects that went to the Z B A, I'm not familiar with. But they would have had the same opportunity potentially, instead of going to the Z B A maybe to submit for a P U D for their project. For their home, but I, I don't know, I haven't re- reviewed it for that. So, yes, I do see what you're talking about. Um, that would be a decision on Carrie, whether or not she wanted to adjust the plan to move the building. Taking away that opportunity for the home to be there. We were well in excess of what the county would require. We are proposing a P U D which provides the opportunity to create the deviations. Um, and I'll leave it at that. And if I can answer trustee Noel's question about trees real quick.
Yes, sure.
I'm reading a small little screen. I have old eyes. Um, I counted that. Of the six hundred and eleven trees that were mapped, seventy-six will be removed. I counted of those six hundred and eleven trees, there's ninety-one landmark trees that met the qualifications and were mapped. And eight of those landmark trees would be removed with total build onto the project. That's not, I'm talking all phases, not just phases.
Thirty-four replacement trees per year, per sheet three. You're correct.
Trustee Mike?
Um, yes, a few questions. Um, the first one is. You mentioned that you now have the money to purchase the property. Um, but you also mentioned that you've already started doing some work on it.
Um, what we're doing is talking to people about well testing and things like that. The work that will be needed for a, um, a final P U D, the next phase.
I thought you said you'd already done some dirt moving agriculture?
So.
Oh, oh, you're talking about that.
The um, trustee, um, the site was an agricultural use. They were actively tilling and planting crops and so on. Um, when Carrie entered into the agreement with the current owner. Um, it was thought that there wouldn't be an opportunity to plant those crops, invest in the seeds and plant the crops. So one of the things they did is Carrie's been working with agencies to plant it with um, prairie grasses. So that it stabilizes the tilled field area, uh, since it wasn't going to be used as crop land.
So it remains uh, this owner's property with your full agreement to do that. Okay. Um, my second one is the fire hydrant. Um, is that fire hydrant going to be then just drying on the well?
So we haven't gotten into the calculations for the fire hydrant or the calculations for, um, some of these buildings will be fire suppressed. Um, all of that information needs to be informed by the preliminary site plan, which is setting us up for density. And then that's going to inform the volumes and water usage and all those kinds of things. Uh, and then once with this, the other thing that starts happening is the building design happens. So then they can get code classifications which will inform how much water they need for fire suppression for the structure. And fire suppression for the hydrant. Um, there are solutions, let's say. Um, for fighting fire and storing water for use as a hydrant that um. You know, would rely on the well totally. And there's ones that might rely on the well and um, storage.
Okay, so you mentioned, and I think our planning person uh, mentioned that there would be this fire hydrant. And it would address one of the issues. So it sounds like it's very much in a preliminary stage about having a fire hydrant.
We're anticipating having a couple of fire hydrants, one on the north side and one on the south side. What I can't tell you is whether they'll be fully.
Well.
Well, I mean, they will be well, whether we have storage volume of water there or not is really the question.
Okay, um, uh, next one is, you talked about having open space. And what was the acreage that you were estimating would remain an open space?
Um, ninety percent of ninety-two acres.
Okay, so are you anticipating that you would be applying for a conservation easement on that property?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, what does that mean?
Um, I don't think we will. Um, I just want to be sure that I don't say it definite and then it comes back to bite me. But when you look at the um, layout, we're, we're not planning on submitting for any conservation um, funds. Like for instance, that seven acre prairie, we just went ahead and worked with Washington County Conservation District. And volunteers from the Pheasants Forever and just did it without getting money to do it. You know, we just, we, we were able to just do it on our own. And, and so. That's how we imagine things moving forward.
Okay, and my final question is about financing. Um, you mentioned, and uh, you sent me the prospectus saying it would be about two hundred thousand dollars per year per client. Um, my interest is in phase one, where you only have eight clients. So um, that would be eight times two hundred thousand. Um, how do you see that being sufficient?
It's not. You're, you're, you're.
How will you augment that?
Uh, we need to, we get phase one, we need to build the next house, next house as quick as possible. Um, and what it is, we figured when we get to about six to seven houses right in that area. Is about the time that our um, operating funds could be a hundred percent covered by that income. Till then, we are also going to have some fundraising. And so that's why, you know, we're looking at the capital campaign. Is for the whole entire cost of thirty-five million. And we are doing construction in phases, but the capital campaign is, once it's launched, we'll just keep going. There won't be any pause or anything like that, because you're very astute for catching that. And that's something that we have been trying to point out to people. We can't just build two houses and say we're financially stable. We have to continue building homes.
Because you probably reached a level where you've figured out how many residents you need, it's income-producing residents. To pay for this.
Yeah, between six to seven homes, that and the number of residents there.
So seven times four, about twenty-eight residents. You always need to have on prep.
Yeah, and, and till then, we're looking, is there other ways, um, financial, but we don't have that all. Figured out what that, what those options will be. But we do recognize that it's very important that we continue. Building homes as quick as possible. As soon as we're done with the first two, we want to be already started on the next two and the next two.
You'll have your ten million that quickly and then another ten million that quickly.
That's the goal. And we also are looking for our capital stack because this is low-income housing. You know, working with Senator Sue Schenk and representatives and things like that, looking at um, funding through that source too. Which could make a big difference. This wouldn't all just be um, through generous donors.
Okay, and your donors would know that it's going to not only be capital, but also upgraded.
Yes, yeah, um, it's right, it's right in there, um, on our flyer at the back.
Okay, thank you.
I get, I get it. I'm not.
Well, I asked you if you had anything to say.
I, I do, but I can wait.
Okay, um.
Um, trying to be brief and not get over things. Um, first off, I wanted to bring this back up. I know there's been a lot of concept, conversation rather, about your budget. Uh, this is a planning and zoning decision. Well, I'm sure we all have a lot of thoughts, comments and concerns about budgets and. Whether you construct a project and everything else, the planning enabling act has nothing to say about that. Just to put that out there for everybody on the way. Uh, or what we think about who may or may not be involved with the project or anything else that goes on. I just want to put that all out there for the board that, it's a lot of these other things that are out there as pieces of information. But they're not relevant to planning or zoning. Um, just sort of level set. One other thing, two to three months is unreasonable for you to probably start construction. Mr. Culver could explain that more in detail, but just to go through the um. Final P U D process, the pre-construction process, uh, final design phase, architecture engineering. And as well as finding and securing uh, contractors, especially this time of year, many of the contractors are obligated to other projects that start soon. Just to throw that out there, but anyway, over there, um, a couple of engineering questions. Is there, there's a bit arsenic talked about around this area for multiple conversations on this parcel? Is there either arsenic in the ground or in the groundwater?
None expected in the ground and the well testing repels the water.
Um, hold on, um, arson, I'm not an environmental scientist, but I can, I will tell you. Um, having been involved with this property for a number of years, arsenic has not been an issue on any of the properties. Other than to the west side of Baker Road. Arsenic is naturally occurring and it's likely to occur naturally um, on the site. But not to the level that it has.
Not to warrant a phase two environmental or. Of course, very good.
Just Ryan to mention something, Dexter historically has had low-level arsenic contamination. In their water supply, but they filter it, they filter it and they treat it.
Okay.
Um, sort of go along, I know there's been discussion about the fact that the system for the wastewater products, we'll call it. For the, you may accept it, or whatever we want to actually call the thing. Is there a grinder pump or any other equipment that's above ground at all?
The, the, there are grinder pumps. Those pumps are associated and they're located by the residential units or the buildings. Um, this would be a system that would be very similar to like multi-lakes authority.
Yeah.
Um, if you're familiar with that. Um, so the, the vault, the well, the grinder sits at the, at, at the use, at the structure. F one is in that, it's pumped a low-pressure way to the site. The thing that you would see at grade.
Like this tall.
Yeah, right.
I, I have one of my, I never hit that rate about, I just was clarifying, if you're familiar with them or had questions about it.
In, in where the drain fields exist, there may be like a wooden bench with an electrical box. That may have a tiny light on the side that's green or red.
Yeah, that makes, that makes sense. Um, I did see that you're abandoning a couple of wells, at least on your site plan sheet three. I guess out of curiosity, since you're going to drill these two new wells on the southern part of the property. Why not use the existing wells on the southern part of the property further?
So there are wells, there's two, as you point out. There's a well, we believe was associated with the old homestead uh, house. That was there, we're not sure the quality of the reliability of it. And then there was a well that was drilled further to the east. I think that's, that was a newer well to see. About flows with previous projects. It happens to be in a not very advantageous pro- uh, spot. For this development, but was in an advantageous spot for what was contemplated previously. They, they will likely, as this move, should this move forward. It would likely be used as part of the study to study like drawdowns and those kinds of things in the hydrogeal, but not likely to move.
And then you would end up abandoning.
Right.
Um, I guess clarifying, Carrie, I know you, as an organization or tax exempt. Do you at these, at this time, plan on applying for property tax exceptions? Do you at least at this time plan on applying for property tax exceptions, since it is a separate, I guess, concept and property?
Yes, uh, our intention is to use the land pretty much from day one for our mission.
That just helps clarify something for me, and thank you for answering the questions about the trees. I found that on your same plan, I went back and looked, so thank you for that, that's all I have.
Trustee Riser.
Thank you, um, this might be for you, Laura, all of the model motions to approve with condition to, to postpone. And to deny have a condition wherein the applicant shall work with the property owner. To provide a conceptual layout of the entire Sloan Kingsley property depicting the potential development of the entire site. Why would we want to encumber this owner with what the other, what the, somebody, a third party wants to do with his land?
Those were model motions based upon conversations I had with a, a number of, um, board members. They are meant to be an example of a motion, an example of conditions. Um, they are not meant to be in any way, shape, or form the exact motion that you would come up with. Um, but that was taken from conversations that I had with, um, different board members and that was a concern.
Okay, I just, doesn't seem to me to be fair to put the whole site. On the west side of the property and on the, on the northeast side on this lady's shoulder, she's got enough going on. She doesn't have to explain what the hell Lawton wants to do with everything. That's just my take on it. So that, that, I, I'm, I, I, I have concerns about.
Yeah.
Whether that's fair to her.
He could change his mind, anyway. Um, are you finished, uh, trustee?
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate it, I appreciate all your work. I see Stacy there, I see Laura there, I think. Is it Stacy?
It's Sally.
Sally, I, I do them too.
I'm sorry, Sally.
It happens more than you think, it's all right.
Uh, my apologies, I see S.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But thank you for all your work, these, your reports are very detailed. I'm inclined to support this project, uh, to approve it with conditions. I know that there'll be board support, but I'm, uh, for this, I like the clustering of the houses, I like the concept, I like the public benefits, I like the trailhead. I, 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 I'm, I'm going to be supporting this whether it's today or in the future. But we'll see what happens.
One top.
Yeah, thanks. Um, yeah, I'm, I, um, want to get to the point where we, um. Have a good motion, which I would be happy to offer to approve with conditions, but I don't feel that we have the right potential condition. So, um, I think we can get there with some time, but I just want to share a couple areas. Um, that would be important for me in terms of conditions. Um, let me say demonstrate license shore would not be, uh, I wouldn't want to include that condition. That the applicant work with the property owner to provide a conceptual layout, absolutely not. Um, you know, certainly the other things, I'm very interested in, in, um, you know. Trustee Brand about the, the deviation, you know, if there is any change in the design to avoid it or not. I don't know how big of a deal that is for the project. I would want, um, some, and I saw Barry Lannick here, I'm not sure why. Um, some assurance that, and, and I know, you know, this is difficult to ask of a nonprofit. But, you know, we're all kind of, um, trying to conserve as much open space as we can. And as you know, this full property has been at the top of our conservation list, um, for, uh, many, many years. Not in our master plan, which is what this is based on. Um, but I know there's been conversations, possibilities, Carrie, not putting you on the spot right now, for real. But about the possibility of many hands coming back and asking CIO Township for open space funding. And I would want to, as a condition, get to a point that would be acceptable, um, to you all, to have a condition. That many hands would conserve X portion of the property, you know, as farmland, whatever your plans are. Um, without coming back and asking CIO Township for that open space money, money. Because I really want us to really, if we're able to kind of not allocate it here and you're able to kind of carry that. Um, then we can use it, you know, somewhere else to conserve, to conserve something else. And. Yeah, I mean, there, there is just so much more that happens, um, with the final PUD. But just generally, and, and of course, anything else with our engineering and planner, um, might have any of those conditions as well. I'm curious about, um, the license shore, it's really important. And I, it sounds to me that we just don't have enough information at this juncture. But there'll be opportunities in the future to address that.
Um, I wanted to comment also.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I haven't got a turn. Sorry. Okay, you've finished? Yeah, okay, um, I have a couple of, um, well, first of all. Um, you had said for the community benefits, there was the fire hydrants.
Hydrant.
Hydrant, and where would that be located? Because.
It's at the north entrance, um, close to Baker Road, it's enough in that a fire truck could pull in, fill up.
The north, and so would that, would they be close enough to the, to the homes in that area?
Um, it's right, um, it's right by the community center, which, when talking to the fire chief, that was his main concern. Is the community center, and we have a separate fire hydrant that is more in the development, closer to the large homes. Those eight large homes have their own separate fire hydrant.
So the community center is for what again?
Um, the, we also call it an indoor rec building, it's going to have some offices. It's going to have, um, our commercial kitchen and bakery for the residents on site. Um, and that's, like I said, on, on the, off the north driveway.
Okay, so the community, so the community center is just for the residents, this isn't for, um, selling goods or.
Uh, it, it's designed, half of it will be a indoor auditorium kind of setup. That could, um, also be used as a gymnasium, because we all know the cold winter days here in Michigan. And then it'll have our offices, will eventually be there, and, um, a commercial kitchen. That again will be for learning, um, cultural, and then we're also preparing lunches for people who live on site. Not outside people, um, and, and then the, the bakery would be part of that.
Okay, so the community benefit is, when we talk about community, community benefits, that's for the whole community. And having this fire hydrant, which is considered, if that could be used for any community.
Yes.
Up and down Baker Road.
Up and down, okay.
So supervisor Carrie, the, the reason for the two hydrants is, the one by the residential units is to service the site. It's behind fencing, uh, and in the gate. The one on the north side is situated such that, um, the fire department wanted quick access, so it's short off of Baker Road. They have quick access, they can use the parking area to turn around, uh, load the pumper, uh, truck, and then move along. It's not behind any gates, it has easy vehicle access, so they don't necessarily need a hydrant in that area. They wanted one down here for the residential units, so it's adding, um, this benefit for them to have a quick spot to load. And.
That makes sense, yeah, thank you. Um, another thing, you said that there's no basements. What about, what happens if there's a tornado?
Um.
What, where will the residents go?
We, we have interior rooms, um, in, in the design, and so we'll have interior rooms that would be a safe, um, location. But you've got to realize, a lot of people are wheelchairs, walkers, you know, eh, yeah, so we, we just, everything's on one floor.
Yes, I understand that, but having thick walls, I mean, it's scary to, you know, and tornadoes happen, they happen in that area. Um, okay, the other thing, um, yeah, this is the PUD, um, of course, and we have nothing to do with your funding. We don't have anything to do with the surrounding areas and landowners and anything like that. Um, but I do have a concern, um, i- in it, this is in our ordinance regarding, um, the PUD. A mix of residential and non-residential uses and should be located in the township water and sewer district. So you have talked about, um, um, the farm stand, which, you know, you can have a pharmacy, um, that's. But that is a mixed use, and then the other was the cafe, and the cafe that is open to the general public.
But it's not run as a business, the purpose of the ca, um, we're not charging for the coffee or the baked goods. We're not selling that. Um, the cafe is there so that the residents have an opportunity to, um, learn. Standing behind a counter, helping people, service, it's also being used as a meeting space. For people in the wider community come in and they can then meet with the individuals. Um, we think of these items very similar as you would a, um, um, what, what's it, um, country club. You know, uh, or, or a golf course, which is a residential PUD and recreation.
Condominium clubhouse.
What?
A condominium clubhouse.
Condominium clubhouse.
Right, but that wouldn't be open to the public, that would be open only to the condominium, um, residents.
They can be, um, and one thing we are willing to put in the PUD writing is we're never renting any of our space out to a third party. For events, that's something that we've stated before and are willing to put in writing. Which I know some of those clubhouses do rent out.
Yes, um, the, the other thing is, um, I know that you're, you're requesting not to have a fence around the septic field.
Oh, yeah, it makes no sense.
Yeah, that doesn't make sense, but there is some equipment, um, I don't know exactly what it, um, Laura had. Laura, you had used a technical term, but that should have a fence around it.
Um, Ryan, I wish he was here, that's what he was referring to as being about this tall. The, the equipment that, um, not needing a fence around it because it's only about this tall, and we'll just have that electrical box.
And that's the only thing that, that's the only equipment that would be, um, potentially accessed above that?
There, there's nothing to fall into or to tamper with per se.
Okay.
That would require a fence, um.
Okay, I've finished, um.
One more question, the trailhead, so would that be public access for the trailhead? And will public be able to get our other trails that we're acquiring in that general area, like link? Someday we want to link it from maybe, uh, Sloan all the way to, you know, Saginaw Forest, wherever we can go. So is that something that you're, you're committed to allowing like Murphy and Liz and their crew to develop trailheads and link up with it?
Yes, yep, it's in the plans, it's in the drawing, we have a designated parking area that's outside the fencing. So it is available to anybody, um, and we also, um, are agreeing to any signage that's needed on our property. Or at the entrance on Baker Road, allowing the public to know that there's a trailhead there they can access.
Like with the official CIO logo? Okay, thanks.
Yes, you know.
Yep, I have one more comment, um, we didn't talk about this. Um, I, I was told that you understand that you do have to comply with the CIO Community Wastewater. System ordinance, and under that ordinance, there's creation of a special assessment district. And you go through a conditional use permit application early on, um, for the site. And then there's creation of an escrow account later to cover any issues with system. Have you read the ordinance?
I think some of that, isn't some of that Michigan, uh, that, um, that there needs to be an operator. And then the escrow, is it certain amount of value based on replacement or something?
Right, yeah.
If we went through this, we'd have heritage woods. Yeah, yeah, so, but it requires two, because you're having two drain fields, it would be two escrow accounts.
Uh, and the main thing to really keep in mind, we're a single owner.
Right.
And, and because we're a single owner, in the worst-case scenario of what this is all designed for, is say we go belly up. No one's going to be living there, because we've gone belly up, the, the, it, it isn't like there's going to be people using and living in the homes. And the person who's in charge of keeping the wastewater maintained is gone and out of the picture. That doesn't happen because we are all one owner.
And there's only one, one property description, so the special assessment for other properties doesn't, doesn't apply.
Well, I mean, I think it's creation of a special assessment district to, for funding and decision-making. In case you need that down the road.
That would be if there were more than one property, as if, as if it's all one owner, there's nobody else to assess.
I, I thought there, there was an escrow account required for each community waste system. So I thought there would be two required.
Laura, are you, you had your hand up, is, are you answering this question?
I, I was going to contribute. I just wanted to speak to the conditional use, um, i- if for, for a PUD development, like Heritage Woods. We did not make them go through the conditional use approval for the community wastewater system, it was approved it through the PUD. So I just wanted, that's the point I would, wanted to make, that there would be no additional conditional use that would be required. Um, the, the community wastewater system would be approved as part of this planned unit development.
And what about the question of the two versus the one, I don't know, we need to answer that tonight, but.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to answer it tonight either, but off, you know, off the top of my head, I would say, because it's a single owner. It doesn't matter that there's two pieces to it, it's all the same thing, so I would say we're talking about one, that's something that we can work on.
Yeah.
Okay, I would rather table this and take a couple of weeks to work out. You know, a motion that we would bring forward, um, because I think it's going to be a detailed motion. And it will have conditions, and Mariah can spend time on it, and others can weigh in.
Laura.
Yeah.
So are you, are you bringing forth a motion or?
To table.
To table.
And just to differentiate, are we tabling or postponing, only because?
To the next meeting, I mean, I'm fine bringing it back to the next meeting.
I, I, I wonder, well, I'll wait until you call for a second, but if there's no second, I'm different.
Is there a second or?
So you're, uh, say it again, why, uh, postpone to the next?
Yes.
Yes. I'll, I'll second.
Okay, um, motion by Noel, support by Monk to postpone to March eleventh. Postpone the consideration of many hands, life-sharing community, preliminary PUD until the, um, until the next. March eleventh, meeting, March eleventh, next board.
I think Jessica had.
Regular meetings.
A friendly amendment, um, that it, that it would be a motion to postpone the matter to the March eleventh board meeting. And to ask our attorney, planner, and team to return with a model motion for approval with specific conditions.
Yes.
I su, I support it's good work.
And so we can at least give, it seems like we have some consensus on a direction of approval with conditions. But we want to get those conditions right and get them out.
And I would ask, uh, Mariah and Laura, whether you think you have a sufficient grasp of what those should be. Based on, on this deliberation tonight.
Yes, they gathered some things down that they came up, uh, assurance of percentage of conservation without asking for CIO open space money. Uh, no rental of the buildings.
Party bar.
Um, yep.
This is what we'll do at the next, with, um.
I have those also.
Okay, good, yeah.
Um, okay, so let's, let's take a, a roll call vote, please.
Okay.
So a motion by Noel, support by Monk to postpone March eleventh board and ask our attorney, planner, and team to return with a postponed model motion for approval with conditions. Yapo?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Monk?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Riser?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Motion adopted seven zero.
Can I make a request, please? Uh, could, would we have the motion in advance so that we can comment on it and.
Uh, could, would we have the motion in advance so that we can comment on it in advance?
Yes. Sure.
Yeah, we, we should have it as part of the
Packet.
The motion, the, the packet.
Generally.
When it is published on the Thursday prior to the meeting.
By five P M.
So that would be? Yeah. Seven, um, six.
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 You have about five days to weigh in. If it comes out on Thursday.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Good day, thanks Laura.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Great, um, thank you.
Moving on to, um, L five, possible action determination of salary for truck. No, give them time, just. Need to put words, yeah. Wait. A motion to take a five minute break.
Fine, um, yeah.
Okay.
Jessica, help me then.
Why, why make the motion?
Yeah, make a bit of motion. Oh, make a break and then.
Yeah. All in favor?
Oh, yeah, make the motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Okay, great. And Lisa?
Five minutes. Ten thirty five, please.
Rob, thank you, you're a life assist.
They, they were like, yeah, if you get it done, I'll, I'll sign it without. If you don't, if you don't, we'll sign it without. And. We're back from a break.
Or, or.
Yeah. Or pick the table, is that it? Okay, and we're missing a treasure, but that's okay. Return, already turned up. Ten thirty nine. Ten thirty now, get it? Get it? Yeah. Oh, yes, you picked the votes in front of us, yeah. Okay. Um, let's move on to L five, determination of salary for township trustee. Um, and where is Tony thing? Oh, she's here, she's here, okay, good. We don't know, it's out there somewhere. This is model motion to options. To reject by resolution requires five votes and the others to take no action.
I'm only taking no action on this, uh, on the compensation committee's determination of the salary for township trustees.
With their support.
On my second.
Wait, wait, I don't understand. To take no action.
Yeah, we could each take no action, go on to the next one, but if we formally take no action, then we know that's over.
Then move it forward. To take no action means that um, attorney thing. Then, then the determination goes into place and the salaries are effective as of April one.
So the two choices are uh, vote no on it, right?
To reject by resolution. By resolution.
Or no action.
Right.
So no action is approval and no, with no vote.
Right.
And some, some places actually approve, some, some places actually vote to approve, but it's not necessary. So at least in the last two times, what we've always done is no action. And with no action, even just no action without a vote to take no action, which is a little ironic. But I'm happy to take a vote for no action, if we all know what we mean by that.
We don't have to do any.
I, I, I'm willing to move on.
I am too.
I'm willing to withdraw my motion and move on to agenda item L six and the record will reflect that we took no action on L five.
I'm, I'm not opposed to that. I, we still get to talk about it? That's all.
Yeah.
It's on the table, right? You first? You first did it, I seconded it.
Yeah.
What? Okay. We're discussing. Attorney thing, this is a little confusing. So if we take no action and there's no motion to take action, then we don't discuss it, we just move right on.
Well, I mean, you said earlier in your meeting, sometimes you talk first and then have a motion after.
Yeah, motion does get a follow on good for debate.
I mean, if she wants to talk about the item.
Okay, let's go, it's fine. Well, and this is a little different than normal resolutions and, and whatnot because, or, um, just items. So trustee Brandt, would you?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, um, on, for the trustees, um, I, I ran for office not expecting, uh, an increase. Um, just as I said, regarding an employee, you wouldn't give an increase in the first year. So, um, I had no expectations of that. Um, I think it's, uh, clearly warranted for people that have been here. Maybe I have a little bit of a learning curve. Um, honestly, Kathy Noel puts in the most work of any of the trustees and I appreciate that. And John, the incumbent, uh, I appreciate your knowledge as a newbie. What I intend to do to follow my own sense of what I said about the employees is whatever you determine, if it's determined ten five, ten thousand five hundred, I will be donating five hundred dollars for a project. That's all I wanted to say.
And that would be, that would have to be a different, um, it's all
That's
Separate.
Doesn't need any action by the board.
Or in her bank.
That's right.
Yeah. Okay. That's what advice I was received also, I can just give it back. Yeah. Or direct it.
Individual private.
Yeah, yes.
And then could I say something else just in general? Since I have experience with the compensation commission and I had experience in, um, pulling data and analyzing, I was asked to pull some data for general law townships, um, comparables, population taxable values. Manager, no manager. And then I've got data for, uh, all of the positions. Anybody like to see this?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
I worked on it today, so I did not, was not able to put it in the pack.
I can, I can take a few. Post it, ma'am.
Yeah.
Um.
No, I support that, thank you.
What?
Um, thank you.
Thank you.
Audience?
Anyone?
I'm just the only one I have.
That's, I'll give it to.
Thank you.
I, I would just say the following for all of the items, I'll say it once and all. I'll thank the compensation commission for their work, I appreciate it. Um, I also think from a leadership standpoint, it's rather for, I'm making I'm making, but we both by board action to not give some of our, all our employees with under twelve months. Senior, seniority or service time, uh, a raise and I'm going to get a raise in less time than they will, I think that's, uh, core leadership. Um, so I, I will be doing something with, if I help figure out what I'm going to do with it. So I can't get it rejected. I also, uh, do find this concerning that to the timing, I think it's, uh, unfortunate that we have to have this discussion tonight when we could table this and have a discussion about the greater budget implications of this. Is there general funds currently eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars of projected deficit? I think it's a bit inappropriate to yes accept or not do anything to stop us getting raises now that people don't deserve it. Certainly understand that and appreciate everyone's hard work, but we also have to do the right thing right now.
So, um, regarding the compensation commission, this board um, well, a couple of boards ago had approved for compensation commission to be created. We did not have one before.
Twenty twenty one.
Twenty twenty one. And there was good reason for it. And, um, this was an opportunity for us not to create our own salaries. It was an opportunity for residents to, our boss, create a determination for our salaries. And this just happens to be by statute, we don't have a choice. It's every two years and odd years. And it just so happens that we were elected in the end of twenty twenty four and now we're here in twenty twenty five. And by statute, they had to meet because the board had approved for us to be ruled in some ways, our determination for our salaries. So that's that's all I'm going to say right now, at this point. Okay. Flintoff, do you have anything?
Sure, um, on the, I'm just trying to track procedurally. We're talking about the item of trustee and we have a withdrawn motion, if I'm tracking right, but we're talking about this item. I guess just to go around, I, I support, I'm not going to reject the determination, I support it. Um, I, I would have supported a higher determination had the compensation commission come back with one. Um, the proposed increase of like the five percent is roughly cost of living over two years. Um, that makes sense. Um, I just want to note, you know, the time required to be a trustee, it's highly variable as we've seen across our trustees over the years. But I just want to say a really engaged trustee, it's probably, we have four very engaged trustees, so I'm really appreciative of that. Um, you know, that's really like kind of a two day a week job. And, um, I just want to note how much time goes into being, um, trustee and thank you all. I support this determination and I'm happy to, uh, take no action on it.
Anyone else? Trustee Noel?
Yep.
Morning.
Okay. Um, Kathleen, thank you for this, it's helpful. And I know that four members of the compensation commission were doing this for the first time. I wish the compensation commission had invited the trustees to come. We probably would have had relevant information to share, but you didn't. And I and I didn't watch the meetings. So I didn't, I wasn't aware i- until it happened that you, you were having the meeting was ending, you were having your final meeting and the Friday meeting was canceled. I thought there was a meeting on Friday. Um, also, when I went and tried to watch your final meeting, the audio was extremely poor. And it was very difficult to listen to, I couldn't catch a lot of what was said. So that's all. Okay, okay. Anyone else? L six?
No, I think they, uh, I recall a comment that Jonathan made about the trustees. And he said the comps that they had, uh, that the trustees were I forget the word, but I think he said we were above average. Is that what, um, is what I think he might have said?
Yes.
Um, on that, and, and so I trust whatever data they had, um, that that was their, um, conclusion. Um, and I had no reason to believe it, anything different. And when I ran, I knew I was going to be a, a public servant and, uh, had never um, thought about one, that point.
Thank you. Um, moving on to L six. This would be
We, we don't have to vote, no, no, don't have to, no action and then it's okay, cool.
Way down on the road.
Way down on the record, we're gonna take that paper.
Yeah.
I will
No confusing.
It is.
Whatever John has said, I say that for next for, what is this?
Treasurer?
L six, this is treasure.
We didn't vote. For the record, we didn't vote.
I think, I think Gillian is just taking comments.
Oh, no.
If they're
Oh, I guess, I guess if we take no action.
No, I said we didn't vote. That's why I can't say we did vote, so we're not moving on.
Yes.
Right. Right.
Yeah.
To L six, where this is the
I support taking no action on L six.
Are there any comments for discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, just brief, I wanna thank the Compensation Commission for, for the work on this one as well. I do support that. I see the proposed increase of six point one percent. It's close to the cost of living over two-ish years. I'm not sure if that's all that went into it, but it makes sense to me. I think the salary is appropriate for the level of responsibility, numbers, duties and the time required to carry out this full-time job. The job is complex and demanding and that's it. I support taking no action.
I would like to be. Sure. In my research, it's, it's really interesting how townships look at their elected and their staff. And so if you really dig into it, you start to see things that make sense. So for example, some of these townships that I'm referencing, it looks like the like Amber, the treasurer salary is low, but then you look at how many staff members they have and they have four. So then that starts to make sense. And some of these others, Broceal, which is pretty, they're comparable in terms of populations, taxable value. They pay their elected officials very low amounts, but they pay their staff very high amounts.
Right.
They have a manager, it's like, oh, I did have that one, one hundred and forty-five thousand. They, they pay their finance director comparable. So they have a model that says that staff takes a lot of the action. So these things start to make sense on how they came about. And if you would compare them apples to apples that way, you go, well, in SIO, we have one staff person for the treasurer. So that makes sense that at that rate. And then the difference between is there a manager or not.
Any, anybody else?
Ryan, do you think that this is reflective of comps?
I think it is, I think it's reasonable. I'll still lay my reasons for objection.
Oh, I
As to what I said before, I, I overall do not think that this should be done in this meeting. I'd rather, I don't think I'm gonna get enough people to agree to reject anything to table.
But so you can, you know, resolve to reject it if you have someone.
Especially whether we resolve our budget before we give this.
I mean, that's, that's not what the statute says for the days.
Right.
No, that's unfortunate.
Or we could, or we could move these, every other one to the, to the special budget meeting. And we can resolve our budget, then we can resolve and see if there's funds available to do any or all remaining resolutions that we had to review. I, I just throw that on.
I could support that and I will give some, some history. The first two Compensation Commissions, the timing just by when they met, it meant that the increases were not going into effect for up to a year. I purposely encouraged this commission to meet in January so that you didn't have to determine what's the amount of inflation, CIP, that that takes that all out of the equation, then, you know, then you're trying to get a market value based on current. That did not take into account the impact to the budget, which I now see.
Or, or other, we can have perfect timing for everything.
Right, or going from one year, it was just one year ago that we made increases. You know, it was April one, twenty twenty four.
So I, I will support your voting to discuss this for
I, I would say, I would make it as a bulk motion, see what I wanna do. Would say, well, we discussed L five, so I think that's already taken affect final action. So L six, L seven and L eight to be discussed. It's an additional topic, it's a special board that is called for the wrong March third.
March fourth.
March fourth.
Which question?
I couldn't hear you, Ryan.
Yeah.
Take what you said.
Take L
Which else?
March third.
Six, seven, eight. So those are the, L six is one, treasurer, that's what we're currently talking about, seven and eight, of currently supervising. So we already talked about the trustee that had took effect by no action. So this would be six, seven, eight to discuss at the budget meeting. And it says additionally discussed after we finalize our special budget to see what the general fund deficit is.
No, are you looking for a second on that?
I, I got a second.
Give me a second, I guess I'm looking for.
Hey, you gotta read it again, right? Jennifer, we can't hear you.
Take L six, L seven, L eight, those would be moved to the bottom of the special budget meeting. To be discussed after we discuss the budget and determine where the general fund deficit is. Still exists, it's less, it's more. We will know how many is in the general fund and all these positions are funded by the general fund, so I think that would be an appropriate place to have the discussion. Still be within the thirty days we have after the Compensation Commission ended.
I'm gonna oppose that motion, I think it's kicking the can down the road. I plan on accepting the Compensation Commission recommendation on all, all four of these. So that's where I'm inclined.
Roll call vote, please.
I just wanna comment, I, I am supportive in principle, but not in practice, Ryan. Because I know how much we have to go through and our general fund deficit, part of it is the HVAC. We are, we are, it's, the question is how much fund balance does one, but Ryan, I, I, I like the idea and hear you. But I will oppose it because we have so much else to talk through related to the budget.
Pro call vote, please.
Yapo?
Yes.
Flintoff, no? Brandt?
I second you, I'm saying yes.
Is it, yes to?
The, moving into the special meeting?
Yes.
Noel?
No.
Riser?
No.
Barry?
No.
Okay, motion sails three to four.
So, L six treasury salary. We're finished with discussions?
I'm prepared to accept it.
I mean, I
Just no action, no action.
No action.
Then we move to L seven, clerk. Any discussion?
I think it's reasonable based off of the CPI that was used the, the inflation factors that were used for the proceeding to, I still object to this kind of space.
Okay, no action. L eight. This is for supervisor.
Fine, they're not taking action on this and to heed what our Compensation Commission came up to. I spoke with these gentlemen and they feel that they had sufficient data on which to make recommendations. So I, it's a, it's a, it's a whack, it's a big, it's a big increase. But when I look at this job, there's the duties that are statutory duties, duties that the ordinance has prescribed duties that are policies and our motions and resolutions have a place upon the supervisor. There's the past practice of the supervisor being in and doing certain things and spending a lot of time with emails and with residents, which I think is the job based on the township in many respects, or at least a face of the township. And then there's the duties as performed. And maybe Jillian's got a learning curve and she's not the fastest, but she'll get there, she's gonna work. I, 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 I think it's, I, I, I think it's appropriate. She doesn't have a deputy like others do. We often have periods where we don't have a township manager. We don't have one now and I know that Christie's helping out and I'm appreciative of that. But we don't have a director of operations or township manager and we've lowered the salary, so we'll see how long it takes us to get something like that. We've got a large tax base, we've got lots of residents. Charter versus general law township is just a factor to me, it's a significant factor, but it's not the ultimate deciding factor. We have a complex governmental scheme with a lot of boards, a lot of commissions, special lists, the JROD, all this stuff and the supervisor is kinda like, has to be aware of that. I realize that the supervisor doesn't sit on those, but that the complexity of this township, I think supports that. And I'm not, I wouldn't support a no vote on it if that's, if there was such a motion. And my, my personally, I wanna take no action.
Anyone else?
I have a few comments. So the position of supervisor is a part-time position, in my opinion. And just because someone is putting in long hours doesn't mean the supervisor position is a full-time position. I was very surprised that the Compensation Commission didn't invite the trustees into chat too, as I've said already. But now, and I hear the comparables that they reviewed were heavily favored toward charter townships, I don't, so be it. But I have four years of experience as a township clerk and eight years of experience as a township trustee. So I am forced to rely on my experience and my observations spanning many, many years here and working with many different supervisors. So we'll try to double his salary. Many of us protested, including you, Jillian. And we will eventually reduce his salary based on the Compensation Commission determination that the supervisor position was part-time. Now, in that discussion, at that meeting, Spalding Clerk, who was a former supervisor weighed in with details about why the supervisor position is part-time. At that time, we did have a full-time manager, I'm jumping back now to four years ago. Generally, we have had a full-time manager. We don't have a full-time manager at this time. But all managerial responsibilities have been assigned to other board members and Christie. So Jillian isn't doing any of the managerial responsibilities, others of us are. I think it's a demoralizing statement on the part of the Compensation Commission to trustees, particularly those of us who have worked hard. And I think it's demoralizing to other employees in the township. And I'm already hearing rumblings about it. So yes, the township is growing, I heard comments about that. However, we have more mid-level administrative people working here at Township Hall now than we did years ago. So a lot of the supervisor's responsibilities are being handled by mid-level people such as Chris Jane, we have Aurora, I mean, so this was shocking, this determination was shocking to me. And I, I, I don't know what else to say. So I, I don't support it. I think it's gonna cause some divisiveness on our board if it passes. And I think it's gonna make things worse here. Yes, and it sounds like it may pass, it's fine, but in my opinions. Anyone else?
I, Jessica?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Either way.
Okay. Couple of my, my notes on it is process itself is the process, so I have to accept it whether I like it or not. I'm troubled by having only two choices. But that's, that's what ordinance and state, the two choices is troublesome. And one is that it doesn't allow us to not negotiate, but to modify or to take it back to the Compensation Commission and say could we revisit this in some way? Okay, so, so that's one of my issues. Two is that if I think they did a, a good job in the trustee, the treasurer and the clerk, which I do, I just supported those. Then I have to draw a conclusion that they must have also done good deliberations based upon the data that they had for the supervisor position. And I view it as a supervisor position as opposed to a current one that's filling the gap. So because that, that's what I'm looking at. I would have liked to see, and I don't know if they could have done this, is a two-step. Now, year one, year two. Again, can't take it back. Other thing I look back on is that there were market corrections on the clerk and the treasurer. And I don't think, I know Ryan wasn't in the position at the time and I don't know if Jessica was here or not. But there was a market correction in the clerk position when it went from sixty-four K to eighty-four K. In one movement.
Right, that was when I was appointed.
Okay.
And they appoint, I'm sorry to interject, but it was a completely different situation in that it was the board, the Pre-Compensation Commission, the clerk was exiting midterm. The board posted for clerk applicants, I applied. I said, here's what my minimum would be, if you'd like to hire me, that's what it would be. They did so and they moved it to eighty-four to make it in line with other clerks. And then, but, but to be clear, they also, and it, it is illegal, but I was not on the board. Nope, it was illegal and I was not on the board at that time, but they actually made it retroactive to Jan one instead of June one, when I started.
Okay, so when I was looking at the data, was one of the charts that the commission had was a really good chart, very colorful chart with all these lines.
I needed.
Okay.
Yep.
And it showed, it looked like was a market correction, that the market was, had a sixty-four K for the clerk. And SIO took it to eighty-four because I trust that that was what the market was more appropriate for a clerk. And then the treasurer had a Um and then the treasurer had a market correction in twenty-three, I believe. Um that went from sixty-five K to ninety K. So, okay, okay. Um so those look to me like two market corrections um that um look like some decisions that must have gone into it. Um so, um given those, um I'm inclined to do the do-nothing um one. Um and I would um I I also want to mention something that Jessica mentioned to me that was very um eye-opening. For for me, it was a good data point, is that she said as we look at these authorized positions, and in fact, tonight you actually clarified somewhat about looking at elected positions, not so much as full-time, part-time, but as elected positions. They're just one position. And so I tried to step back and say, we're not talking about trustee, clerk, uh supervisor, anyone, as full-time, part-time. We're looking at them as people who are public servants and in in their, you have to do whatever you have to do, uh whether it's meetings, whether it's a meeting with residents. It's not really a full-time, part-time. It's it's, you're kind of always on if you need to be on. And and so I took that into consideration also. Um I don't track people's calendars. I don't track people's life. Um and so with that, I had to trust the commissioners to say that they did their deliberations as they did with the others, and I have to trust that we, who we named and voted for, um did the job that we asked them to do. And I I don't relish the position that they were in in the number of weeks, and I appreciate everything they did. Um and maybe the data was um was skewed, and maybe the data was not so good. Um I wasn't here to study the data, and if I had more time, I would study the data. Um but, so, that's my thoughts.
Super Ann? Um, so I I developed a wee bit of expertise by being on the commission twice, and I also knew the history, so um I think the board of trust, the previous boards of trustees did a good job in setting salaries for the compensation. Um, I said it wasn't necessarily a market correction for the clerk because the board knew full well, and it was discussed that the job that uh Clerk Flintoff would be doing was all of the duties, statutory duties. And prior clerks had not done that, and the board compensated appropriately. So, that was prior board. The compensation commission determined that at that point, that was the market value for the duties at hand. The treasurer, the previous treasurer, the board recognized, the previous board recognized, I believe, that the duties were not being done by the treasurer. Um it was well-known that our assessor was doing the tax role that our assistant assessor was doing um the cash collecting. And that board knew full well that the treasurer was not fulfilling her statutory duties. Um so the first round of the commission decided to keep it, and the other important information was that the board, that board had appointed the finance director as the deputy treasurer. This is significant because the salary at that time for the deputy, for the finance director carried over to deputy treasurer was a hundred and five thousand dollars. And that they were also hired another assistant. And so the previous salary at sixty-five was appropriate for the person not doing all of the duties um and had a excessive salary on a deputy treasurer. And at the second cycle, knowing that that situation was going to change, treasurer had announced that she was not running, so we knew full well, and we, I put this in whereas statements to document uh the the action. We knew full well we were getting a different treasurer, and we were told specifically that we should be judging the duties of the position and not the person. It was justified at the lower salary, sixty-five, because that person was not fully expected it in this election. So we made a correction to then establish what the market value should be doing all of the duties. Okay, the other thing that happened was um we used general law township data. Um unfortunately, the data that this commission got was heavily weighted for um charter townships. This is very significant. I I did a presentation on this. The duties are vastly different for a charter township. It's intentional. Um the Michigan legislature, when they changed that, allowed townships to reach charter town, charter status with additional duties for the supervisor. And they also have a much higher village rate, which is significant because it 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 creates their general fund, and this is why I put in here operating village rates for general law. SIO has not chosen to go to charter. SIO has not chosen to change the duties for the supervisor at all. Um if you look at Pittsfield, um they're at uh four mills. They capture four times as much as SIO Township does. This is all intentional. As a community, we have decided not to tax our our residents with the charter township rates. Um, we have decided to have a manager. Typically, charter townships do not have managers because the duties that a manager would do, if you look at the duties, which I did a presentation, they are extensive for a charter township. I mean, it goes to HR, it goes to ensuring all of the equipment, all of the roads. Um, it was fully acknowledged by previous supervisors and trustees that SIO Township intended the supervisor position to be part-time. The prior two uh compensation commissions acknowledged that. Um unfortunately, the data that was provided, which I believe was provided, which I know was provided by Romberg. I'm very disappointed in that they gave us data that was not comparable. A mayor is not comparable to um to a uh general law supervisor. A city council member is not comparable to um a general law township. So, um the data was flawed. What was drilled into me is we are evaluating the position, not the person. The board, previous board, board set the salaries based on their knowledge of the person and the duties. We made corrections to say it's about the position. Um, so, we expect to have, the posting has occurred already for uh director of operations, which when I look back at uh David Rowley's contract, it said administrator slash director of operations. So whether you call it a manager, you call it an administrator, you call it, it's it's the same thing. So, um to then, at this cycle, not look at what the duties are and and assign the salary based on what the duties really are. Um as a trustee, I know what my duties are. I volunteer to do other things. I don't expect to get paid for that. I do it willingly. If someone else is doing more than their statutory duties, um they shouldn't have an expectation they're gonna get paid for. They should ask the board if they should be compensated. Um we all knew in um August what the salary is. We knew what the demands were. We decided to run on that, no expectations that it was anything other than what it what it is. I was also part of the effort to um specifically try to recall the prior supervisor because of the doubling of salary. Uh that, that was a hot resident issue, talked about greatly. Um, I believe if the compensation commission had looked at comparables, they would have come to a different conclusion. Because I I've done the work. I've tried to explain, you know, how townships are different, and their communities have a different view of things. I think SIO Township has purposely decided to have a part-time supervisor and a full-time manager, because we've had that for a long time. And when the manager was not available, um two supervisors stepped up and did those duties and got compensated for the additional duties. The duties did not change from November the nineteenth to November the twentieth. No duties changed. It is not reasonable, it's not fiscally responsible for me is to represent the residents to say that a newly-elected supervisor should get an eighty-six percent increase for a part-time job. Um, the the problems it's gonna cause with the employees are significant. Um, you know, there's gonna be employees that say, I do all kinds of work. I do all kinds of extra work. Um you gave me three point one. Um, how can you, as a board, justify giving one person an eighty-six percent increase? I don't think the residents support this, based on what happened with the prior supervisor. It's nothing to do with the person in the position. Um, it's what is fiscally responsible to our residents. If anybody wants to say that we should be a charter township, salary is completely different. If and when that happens, that would be the evaluation. That has not happened. The duties have not changed.
Are you finished?
For now.
Well.
Or can I talk to you? I don't know. I might have something else.
Sure, I I have a comment. Um, I just wanna, again, thank the compensation commission for your good, honest, hard work, truly. Um I I mentioned this before, but I wanna say I understand how it came to be that the compensation commission meeting, the the prior compensation commission called the meeting for January of twenty twenty-five. So, we're just dealing with the circumstances we have, but I will say, you know, I think it's maybe more difficult for um a compensation commission and did a good job, but just after the holidays. But um quickly after, four of the seven people here started their jobs. Um and then suddenly you're evaluating people, um four of the seven who had just um started their jobs all with the compression of time already required by the statute. So, I just wanna reflect, you know, for the township, you know, not that I had any role in setting it as it was, but I wouldn't do it again. So, I I wanna say that I um I I don't support the determination for the supervisor's salary. Um, I want to reflect back, and I went back and reviewed the minutes. In January of twenty twenty, I voted no um um doubling the supervisor's salary, and that was at a time even when it was supposed to be temporary, reportedly, and was supposed to be carrying on some of what was a vacant manager's position. It wasn't well enough defined. I didn't think it was well enough justified. I voted no in August of twenty twenty-one, um when there was a proposal to double the supervisor's salary um because it was simply an instance where we had a supervisor spending a lot of time, not even necessarily claiming to be taking on more responsibilities, but I certainly found, again, there wasn't a justification for that. And so, um you know, I, you know, for the same reasons, I don't feel that the, you know, responsibilities of the general law supervisor, who doesn't happen to be a certified assessor, which most aren't, um, support this level of increase. I would have supported a a smaller increase. I hate that we only have two choices, but this is, this is what we have. Um, I will say that, you know, if there is a future where, you know, any one of the seven officials has new and distinct responsibilities that they propose to carry out on behalf of the township, that's a scenario where the board would compensate unofficial for that. So I want to remind us of that. I think as long as it's not within our, you know, statutory wheelhouse, um and in something additional for the township, it could be done. Um, but I do wanna say, you know, in a general law township, um most don't have certified assessors anymore. That's sort of the odd thing about the position of supervisor is is the statute got updated and required that supervisors either be certified assessors or it gives the board the opportunity to hire a certified assessor, which is what we've done year over year. And so that's why it's kind of a part-time job. If the supervisor were a certified assessor, which is so rare these days, I think it would be a full-time job.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and absolutely, very, very full-time, but the the world has changed and and it's um not. I I do know um the job of the supervisor, um you know, responsible for facilitating board meetings, very public-facing, the point person, responsibilities for the DDA under the ordinance and other things. I won't try to um list them all, but it is not interchangeable with a position of the director of operations or manager. Um there's there's nothing that kind of naturally overlaps with with those. Um, and and I say that, and that came up more in my um January twenty twenty rejection of this proposal. Um, but I will say, I don't believe the job responsibilities justify this high of a salary. It's um really reasonably could be done in, you know, two to three days a week-ish. Um, and so for that reason, um I will be supporting a resolution to um reject the compensation commission determination tonight.
Anyone else?
Only one other thing on the red card as I was looking at it. We have some pay disparity issues we're gonna need to now look at. We just conducted salary study internally and the process of power of decision process. I do have concerns about salaries of other employees relative to this recommendation.
Okay. So, trustee Brand, general law townships. You created this? Or is this, okay. Um, Southfield Township, it says it has fourteen thousand six hundred population?
And you'll see the source of that is the MI Community Financial Dashboard. That's where that comes from.
Okay, Southfield Township has thirty-one residents.
Not according to.
Because there's three villages within the township, and there's only one point seven miles that is unincorporated. I have, I called last Friday and spoke with Judy Mooney, the supervisor, and she said that the fourteen thousand is for the three villages, and they do not have jurisdiction over the villages except for elections. And also, I am, it's not my turn to speak now. And also, they do assessing. So they have eight hours a week she works. They have eight meetings a year, and those meetings are for forty-five minutes to one hour. So she makes twenty-six thousand. That's what she told me. I, and so I told her why I was calling. I wanted to, I said, this is on the list, and I found it odd that the, that the only part-time supervisor was in Southfield Township, because we haven't found any that is part-time, where the treasurer and the clerk are full-time. And she said, well, this is the reason why, because I was the clerk for twenty years, working full-time, and she decided she didn't want to work full-time anymore. And there's really not much to do in this township because of thirty-one residents, which is really odd. I've never heard of that before. And so she asked me, what, how many, what's your population? I said, it's eighteen thousand, but in the next couple of years, it's going to be about twenty thousand. And she said, and what's your taxable value? And I gave that to her, and she said, and how much do you make? And I said forty-four thousand. And supposedly it's part-time. She goes, that is not a part-time position. It should be full-time. And she said eighty-five thousand a year. Okay, I wanted to share that. So Rod, Rod, Manor Consisterian?
Rod Taylor.
Rod Taylor. I believe, if I remember correctly, he gave the statistics that Scioto Township's an anomaly. We are at the top eighty-six percent of general law townships, and we're at the top fifty-six percent of charter townships regarding taxable value, you know, all of that. And so I thought, wow, we're at that, we're eighty-six percent? So that means all these other townships are below us. And where is that, fourteen percent? So I tracked it down. It is Byron Township. Byron Township has a little bit more, twenty-seven thousand residents, population. Their supervisor, where did this go? I pulled their, their finances. Yeah, their supervisor does does not have a deputy, makes, this is twenty twenty-four, twenty-five budget, hundred thirty-four thousand nine hundred thirty-two. The clerk, I'm assuming this is the department because they have to have a deputy, two hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred five. In fact, they all received a five percent increase.
Those might all be departments.
Yeah. And the treasurer, two hundred five, hundred seventy. I don't think it's the whole department, because then there's the assessing department, that's three hundred and six. Anyways, the supervisor is full-time. There's no township with our population that has the supervisor part-time and the clerk and the treasurer full-time. Okay, I'm going on because I have more to say. Recall, doubling of the salary. Supervisor Hathaway did that illegally. We know he did that. This is not illegal. We have a Compensation Commission that the board appointed. I appointed. You voted them in. They did their research. They did a good job on everybody else's salary, but the supervisor? That's really odd. So the recall, yeah, I was in opposition to Supervisor Hathaway. And when he gave his job duties, I was the one that pointed out that he was listing the superintendent for a charter township as his job duties. That's what our manager in our ordinance has, the superintendent job duties of a charter township. When I presented to the Compensation Commission, I only provided the statutory, the the ordinance, the policies and procedures that are my duties, not including, well, RAC, and also the emergency operations process that I have to be involved in. Hopefully that will never happen. Okay, here's something. Remember, this is the way we've always done it, and we've heard that over and over again. And I just heard that tonight. This is the way we've always done it for the supervisor position. Employees are in support, at least the ones that do talk to me, talk with me, and there's a lot of them, and they are in support. My, the salary that this, not mine, the position right now, forty-four thousand is below the Washtenaw County poverty. Okay. Residents are in support of this because we appointed and voted them in to serve the 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 board and to provide them with the responsibility of determination for the positions. And they did that with the best that they knew how. It is about the position and not the person, but I really feel like this is about the person. Because it has been amazing how hard this has been for the past couple of months and the constant attacks and harassment that I have endured. And I can get into detail about that, trustee Brandt, but I'm not going to. The growth, eighteen thousand, we are growing. And the supervisor's position is supposed to be part-time, twenty hours a week. Next week, I have fourteen hours of meetings. So that means I have six hours to do all the rest of the work, call everybody back, and do everything else that I'm supposed to prepare. It's, that's unreasonable. I did not run for this position for the salary. I did run to serve residents, and I will continue to serve residents. I got involved as a resident. I have worked my butt off. I even ran for trustee, ten thousand dollars, seven thousand five hundred a year to begin with. Then it went up to ten thousand. I was happy about that because it helped me pay a little bit of my extra bills. Not even that, actually. So I understand about public servant service, and I have been totally dedicated. And in fact, a lot of you, I got involved in this township and supported you to run, and I expect to be supported in my position as supervisor. I am finished with this. So let's move on to what we need to do next, please.
I have one more comment. Just in terms of, I did watch the, I did watch all the Compensation Commission meetings because I had an interest in it. On their final day, they were struggling with what this salary should be for the supervisor. And people were in a lot of different spaces of what that number should be. I thought it was interesting that their determination was based on the median salary in Scioto Township. That's not a valid determination. It's not. You can't say that there's this low, there's this high. The median, which we know the median is not the average, but that is not a valid, you know, no criticism, but that's, that was a way that I I thought they were trying to get from, somebody got high, somebody got low. How do we get to where we agree? So using the median income for Scioto Township is not the way to evaluate compensation. You cannot tell business owners in Scioto Township, if they have full-time positions or part-time positions, that they must start at seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's not how they're going to figure out how they're going to pay you. There's, they're going to look at what the duties are, and they're going to come up with what they think is fair, and can they attract people? So I, unfortunately, I do believe the Compensation Commission made a mistake on that. I just, it's not the way to figure out what a salary should be. You can't tell franchisees that have drive-throughs that they should pay their people seventy-seven thousand dollars a year. They will, I mean, I'm just trying to put it into real life. That's not what would happen. If you don't like Southfield, it's an outlier. Get rid of that data point. These other ones are comparables. Population taxable value, they are comparable. Do they have a manager? Yes. These townships pay less. Do they not have a manager? They pay their supervisor more. I looked for communities that were similar to Scioto. It's very hard to find a similar community. If you look at Spring Lake, which is an MTA township like X, they're on the east side of the state. Affluence because they're near Lake Michigan and lake property. They're very comparable. Ada Township, which is where my commie lives, is is a township, almost suburb of Grand Rapids. That is comparable. Some of these other ones are comparable based on vicinity. Some are close to, Bedford is close to Toledo on the border. Hamburg is comparable. They have a number of lakes there. People have lake property. Their taxable, their population, their taxable value is similar. They don't have a manager, so clearly that supervisor is doing that work. I wish they had better data to make a better decision, but unfortunately, it just is what it is. So I had a person, I was personally invested in the doubling of the salary. I was personally invested because I took action on it. I spent my own money on it. I researched it. I think this is fair. I don't think an eighty-six percent increase is reasonable. It's not credible. Sorry, folks, but it's not credible to me.
Okay. Moving on. So I'd just like to, if we're done with discussion?
Yep, I think so.
Okay. I'd like to offer a resolution to reject Compensation Commission twenty twenty-five oh four salary determination. It's the motto resolution in here.
Also, for there's a typo at the top of that. Did you see that, the date?
Yes. I see that the date's wrong. I would suggest in the motto resolution, I can read, read the whole thing if you wish. Or?
Sure, if you want.
Whereas it's got some blanks that I would propose filling in. Whereas the Scioto Township Compensation Commission has determined that the salary for Office of Supervisor shall be eighty-two five effective April one, twenty twenty-five, whereas the Compensation Commission determination was filed with the township clerk on February twenty, twenty twenty-five. Whereas MCL forty-one point nine five and section two twenty of the Scioto Township Code provide that the determination shall take effect thirty days following filing the determination with the township clerk, unless the Township Board by resolution adopted by two-thirds of the members elected to and serving on the board rejects the determination. Whereas Scioto Township Board of Trustees wishes to reject the determination. Now therefore be it resolved that the Scioto Township Board rejects the determination of the Scioto Township Compensation Commission for the Office of Supervisor. Be it further resolved that if this resolution is adopted and is effective, the salary of the Office of Supervisor shall remain at forty-four three oh eight. And be it finally resolved that this resolution has no effect unless adopted by at least five members of the Board of Trustees.
Roll call. Do we need to, no, we already have a it's right, right?
Right here.
Oh, I mean, yeah.
Welcome back. It's how many pieces? Well, Ryan didn't know how long I was going to talk, so.
No, no, I'm sorry. I.
He took a bet.
Yeah. Of course.
It's not sleeping.
There was an earlier version of our draft rules board that involved some sort of a deputy or some sort in instances like this that could go get a member back to the board table for a vote.
Oh, yeah, like a sergeant-at-arms.
Like a sergeant-at-arms. There was a sergeant-at-
Wrestle them back in?
Yes.
Yeah. It's Chrissy. He's in the bathroom.
Sergeant-at-arms, sergeant-at-arms.
Here, there's a sergeant-at-arms.
It's all on video.
I know, I know. That's why I was trying to talk about something else. So we weren't putting up that. Yeah, that actually was a discussion, and I can't remember how far it got, but it was the sergeant-at-arms and what lengths they could actually go to, to to require people.
To the other side.
But you, but you won't be able to get through, Ron. He needs to stay here and supportive. Well, I can sit here because I'm doing my kegels.
Oh, yeah, this is recorded.
That's why she said.
Exactly, that is being recorded.
Bad respect, Kathleen.
Are you okay, Ryan?
Yeah. So there's a resolution to reject the Compensation Commission determination of the Office of the Supervisor, that it would be resolved that the salary of the Office of Supervisor would remain at what it is, and that the resolution has no effect unless adopted by at least five members of the Board of Trustees. The resolution is moved by Flintoft and supported by Noel. And Jillian was just about to call for a roll call vote.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Okay. Yeaple?
Yes.
Flintoft? Yes. Brandt?
Yes.
Monk?
No.
Noel?
Yes.
Carrie?
No.
Motion fails, four to two.
Moving on to oh, for the poll top, you have a item?
Thank you. Ever so brief, apologies for the late arrival, but the county clerk asked that I, gave it to me yesterday and asked that I get it approved today. It is a very simple amendment to the countywide early voting agreement. I recommend we adopt this amendment. All it does is accept May sixth special election from the countywide agreement stating that the county won't have to provide early voting. Dating that the county won't have to provide early voting for that election. The school district and the school district coordinating committee have recommended not having early voting. For this small election due to the costs versus the potential turnout. I welcome all questions.
For Flintoft, this is a special meeting or a special election.
Yeah.
Okay, it's late, so if there's special elections in the future, will we? Will this happen again because there was, or does it depend on the county and the?
Yeah, so the, the, we had a spirited discussion about this, the constitution says, and this is my interpretation of the constitution. And I'm pretty sure our attorneys agree with me. But I think there's attorneys elsewhere who are floating around different things, but the constitution states. That early voting shall be provided for every state and federal election and it's up to the discretion of the jurisdiction. That's the Township Clerk. If early voting will be provided in a special election. However. With school district elections, they're governed by school district coordinating committees. Which are the eight local clerks, the school district and the county clerk who make decisions for them. So it's the school district that's going to pay for this election, so they have a big say in it. And they have said, we don't want to pay for early voting, we've all kind of looked at the numbers and realized. It wouldn't really provide much extra turnout anyways for the very small numbers we're talking about, we're talking about about three thousand. Syo voters, we will bring in our, a few Freedom Township and Lodi Township voters. And I'll administer that, but all this would be is to amend it. So that the scope of the agreement, which is good for two years, we all approved this, it would just accept this one election. So I do support and recommend adoption.
So you're. You're providing the, the motion here.
I guess I would move the mild motion to approve the proposed amendment to the county early voting agreement. And to other clerk to sign, set agreement.
There's the house support. Okay, I guess this can be. Voiceable?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion passes.
Now we're to public comment. For the one person that's still awake, or three, three that's still awake.
I don't know. Yeah, just run to the restroom, please. For Jillian.
Okay, please do, Jeff.
F. Jackson, longtime Syo resident, member of the Compensation Commission. I just thought I'd use my time here to make a few final clarifications about the process we used in determining salaries. I'll start by saying I. Am disappointed that there are two members of the commission present here and. We were not given the chance to respond to questions or to comments before the vote. Be that as it may, I'll use my time now for that. I, I just want to make clear that the commission was fully aware of the data presented. We understand the difference between the duties of a, a city mayor. And a charter township supervisor and a general law supervisor. We took that into account, I can assure you, we did. We adjusted our feelings, our numbers appropriately. Also regarding the median township salary, it was just another data point. We did not base the determination of any salary based on. Single points of data, we took comparables, we took medians. We took cost of living, we took all of that, several factors in addition to the fact that our township is growing. And trustee Brandt is, is correct, I mean, I agree with her that there's no perfect way to determine a salary, if there is, I sure don't know it. But we acted with the data we had, we made the appropriate adjustments. We made what we believed were fair and reasonable decisions. Yes, the supervisor's salary was a big increase, again, we based it on what is a supervisor's role now? What are the supervisors' activities and workload now and taking into account their learning curve? We took all that into account, we came up with that number. We were all confident in it and I stand behind all the numbers they came up with. And I will point out that I also oppose Supervisor Hathaway's proposed doubling. And yes, I will admit it, I supported the recall effort as well. So be that as it may, that was then, this is now. Different data, different circumstances and above all, different process. Just a couple of other minor points. Trustee Brandt's suggestion that we bring a trustee in to interview. We noted that in the minutes. And it will be noted as a possible improvement for the next commission, which will take place in two years. We made the active decision that the officers would be enough for this time around, we will reconsider that next time. That's assuming that the commission wants to adopt the same process, they're not obligated to, they could do something completely different. I don't know, we'll find out in two years because I'll be on it in two years. And then I realized trustee Monk had a question that wasn't addressed and I'd just like to answer that. And that is the public comment at the last meeting of the commission, everyone who spoke there. Spoke as a member of the public, we didn't invite anyone else to. Make specific inputs at that time, their input is always welcome, they're always welcome to speak. And we listen to everybody's comments, we take everybody's comments into account, even if the direction we go differs from what they want. We make our decision, but trust me, we. We listen to and respect everybody and everybody's opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for scheduling the special meeting for the budget. I was gratefully relieved that we weren't in for a three-hour discussion tonight for the budget, thank you for making it short. For many hands, they didn't talk, they said they were going to be only electric. But they didn't talk about a generator backup or when power goes out, so there's something. A question there. And then one thing I was. Still concerned with, I totally believe in Carrie and I totally believe in this project, but. I don't understand why there's ambiguity from the state and from the county about guidelines about how these sorts of. Facilities are, are licensed, regulated, oversight. I can't imagine there is not guidelines out there that would help guide this board and many hands. So I would ask the trustees, I'd ask Mariah, I'd ask Laura. To look for state and county guidelines for these housing facilities. Thank you, Ryan, for acknowledging the fact that, that you, trustee Monk, trustee Brandt and supervisor Carrie. Just started their jobs and they already have a raise and employees have to wait a year. I think you have some explaining to do to the employees to justify that. And I think that will be difficult. I apologize for the Compensation Commission audio. I was there as a, a backup recording, I was recording with my phone on a tripod. And the recording on my phone too, the audio was bad and so I apologize that we didn't have better audio there. No worries. And trustee Brandt, lastly. There was discussion about median incomes, but they did not base, as Jeff just explained much better than I can, they did not base their. Number on the median income, you referred to seventy-seven thousand dollars, two of them, Jim Fink was one. And another board member. Looked up median in, income for Syo Township, I think one was seventy-one thousand and the other was seventy-two thousand. So the seventy-seven thousand was not the number they were referring to, that's where they got to in the end, but. That was not the case. So. Difficult meeting, I was worried about this one and you all behaved well, thank you for that. Best progress over the last four years.
Thanks, Rob. Anyone else in person? There's only one more, no, and he's, no, okay, anyone online? Raise your zoom hand if you would like to speak. First up is Jonathan Greenberg, followed by Pat Stein, hi Jonathan.
Hi, this is Jonathan Commissioner Greenberg from the Compensation Committee. I want to thank Jeff and John for their eloquence tonight, I can't match it. I agree completely with them as well, I've heard a lot of comments made this evening. That would suggest we didn't know what we were doing. Or that we don't know how to. Look at data or how to exclude data or what data is relevant or not. I've spent the last thirty years working with very complex healthcare data and I think it's one of the reasons I always ask. I was able to show median income in similar. In similar. Communities. But in the end, without all the data. Having just some of the data. You can make any kind of argument you want. We were looking at this position. As one that would need recruiting in the future. And I don't know how you recruit a half-time position in this day and age. One that was based on the number of hours a week the position currently spends in meetings. Not working because they're learning, but meetings, just week-to-week meetings. We based it on. Other dimensions that may not. Be as codifiable as the average. Income in Syo Township as a talking point. But they were equally complex and nuanced and I think we did our best. With the amount of time and resources that we had. And so I appreciate everyone who said thank you. We are, we, we did do our best. And I think it's a little bit better than what was represented by the Board of Trustees this evening. And if I say anything else. I'm going to guarantee my lack of eloquence and politeness, so y'all have a good night.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Thanks, Ellen.
Next up is Pat Stein.
Hi there. So. I have a question. The vote tonight that was taken on to accept or deny the Compensation Commission's recommendation. For the supervisor's salary, shouldn't this supervisor have recused herself from that vote?
Right, no, no. None of us on any of the votes because the votes are about the position. Is that correct?
Okay, okay, I understand. So the next question I have is supervisor Carrie, wasn't it a part-time position? That you campaigned for? I'm sorry, am I not coming through? Okay, if you're not going to answer them, let me answer for you. Jillian Carey, you campaigned to be supervisor as a part-time position for Syo Township. Those were your expectations and those were the expectations when we voted for you in this position. Now to. Now that you have a really undeserved increase in your salary. I really expect you to step up your game and start doing a better job and stop having these damn hissy fits to the other board members. It's so unprofessional and so unpleasant to listen to. If the job is really getting that hard for you that you have to have. These, I guess I would have to call them attacks to your other board members. Maybe it's time for you to just maybe take a leave of absence and. Get everything together, girl. And the rest of you who voted down the position, or excuse me, the increase in the supervisor's salary. Thank you, you are indeed the dream team. Good night, all.
Thank you, Pat.
Thanks, Pat.
Any other interested public, please raise your zoom hand. Being none, Jillian?
Can I make a comment? A public comment?
Could I have thirty more seconds?
Sure.
So clerk Flintoft, you are greatly respected in this township. You are greatly appreciated, you are an excellent. Clerk, you do an excellent job. And I hope this nasty gram for lack of a better term, it's, it's not even, that's a, it's nowhere near covers what it is, it's. The outrage I hope this generates is going to be huge and I hope you know that a lot of us have a great deal of respect to you, for you and support you. Now, one thing I think that's an option is you need, number one. You need to add to your priority list and I think this event puts it at the top of the priority list, you need cameras in Township Hall. Until you can get cameras in Township Hall, I would suggest ring cameras or wise cameras. That you could put in the high-traffic areas so no one can get in and out without being on camera. And we have some level of protection for the people who work here. And that could happen much quicker than you can get a system installed, but I highly recommend that cameras are desperately needed because of this event. And hang in there, we're with you.
So. Mr. Jackson. Just to let you know. The prior, the. Prior to, to evaluations of the determination, the board did not ask the commissioners to answer questions. So that's just following what they had done before.
Yeah, we didn't ask you questions, but you got all hurt about that.
Okay, let's move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. At twelve oh eight, do I have a second support, a support, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Oh, wait, anybody oppose, have to ask that. Great, thank you, everybody, thank you.